All right, welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting. Eight thirty AM, Wednesday, September eighth, 2021. I'm Mayor Gene Brown. Welcome to the City Hall Chambers. At this time, we'll ask Pastor Robert Bledsoe to come forward from Trinity United Methodist Church to say our invocation. Please stand.
Let's join together in prayer. Gracious and loving God, we first and foremost give you thanks. Give you thanks for this new day, for this chance to be together and to talk about matters that are important to each and every person in this room and in our wonderful city. God, we pray that our words would be meaningful and well thought out and respectful, that we would treat one another with love in all of our conversations, that we would have ears to hear, and that we would be kind in what we do and how we do it this morning. God, we especially remember all of those in our community who are hurting or who are suffering, those who are sick, those who are hungry, those who are seeking employment or purpose or a way to make an impact here for the greater good in Bradenton and beyond. We remember those who wake up every day and put the needs of others before their own, those who serve our community so selflessly. And so, God, as we prepare to look forward at our agenda items this morning, I ask your blessing to be poured out upon each and every person who is here in this place and that your wisdom would be poured out upon them, that as these important matters are discussed and deliberated upon, that you would be honored and the citizens of our great city would be taken care of and looked after. So, God, we give this time to you and we honor you in all that you do. And all of God's people said together, amen.
Thank you. I'd like to call Chief Edwards, Deputy Chief Gere, and Chief Beavens to the front to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the meeting to order. Mrs. Melton, any proclamations, presentations?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to citizen comment. At this time, we're going to call for citizen comment. You have, when you come to the podium, please, on non-agenda items, please state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes. And we're going to go with Sarah Hand first.
Hi, my name is Sarah Hand.
Morning.
And my address is here in the city of Bradenton in nine twelve Seventh Avenue East, Bradenton, Florida, three four two zero eight.
Thank you.
So, what you have before you is a reminder of the Florida Business Incubation Association Fall Conference that will be hosted here in Manatee County, in the city of Bradenton, next week. Mayor Brown is going to be there along with Dr. Scott Hope from the county. Please, anybody who wants to come, if you make sure that they register, because we'll be, we have incubation leaders from across the state. So, you have the University of Florida that we've been working with in this, Ringling, Emory Riddick. And the evening event at Pier twenty-two is really about the landscape of investment and what the future of innovation is. We've been working for a long time to get them to come here, and we're excited that we were able to say that you are being hosted by the city of Bradenton. And just a note we'll be back to tell you about is our work at Station Two has, we've made the first round of the Guide Well Innovation Resilient Cities Challenge with building capacity. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions or look forward to having everyone in town next week. Thank you very much and great job. All right, Jeff Peters.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name's Jeff Peters and I'm building a new home at three twenty-seven River Point Drive Northeast on the east side, and it's a beautiful waterfront community there. And, you know, it's a four-acre property, and it's a thirteen thousand square foot home that I'm building on four acres there, really beautiful place with a cove and all those things. And, you know, throughout the three years that I've been involved in this, you know, I've went ahead and spent a lot of time and effort and physically doing a lot of the work myself as well. And, you know, the more I'm, the other day, I was heading out to do some stuff and there was, on just on my main street on the approach to my property, there's beds, there's trash, there's, you know, furniture, stuff like that. In fact, this morning on the way here, I actually drove through the whole neighborhood and took probably ten or fifteen different pictures. And, you know, the city's invested a lot of time and effort in the Mineral Springs project for the Riverwalk extension there, and the tax revenue is going to increase with that neighborhood being revitalized. And I've spent most of my life up in St. Pete, and I've watched what's happened in the old northeast section and just north of downtown, and I actually personally know the vice mayor there. My daughter went to school with her daughter. And so, I've seen the effort that Kanika Tomlin and that group has made to actually revitalize the southern part of the city as well now, and the push is to get all that waterfront stuff done. You know, Pinellas is great because they've got a ton of property on the beaches for their property taxes. Here, we don't have that. We have the river, and that's a beautiful thing for us because we don't have as much beachfront as they do. But, you know, with your taxes being able to be increased, I mean, this year alone, the trim notice just came in, just on my land alone without the house being CO'd, you know, my property taxes are going up fifteen hundred dollars. So, I'm thinking like, what am I getting? And then if I look at Tidewater to the east of me in those communities and I look at the west side, I'm thinking, you know, the basic things that need to be done in order to help procure more income for you guys in those locations, like the trash pickup. When somebody rides through that neighborhood, they're like, well, I don't want to live here, you know? And so, that's what I'm here to try to see if we can't get some help on down there to, because I'm physically out there picking stuff up myself, throwing up my dump trailer, taking it to the dump to try to help the community look a little bit better. So, I'm hoping that you guys can do something about that and maybe try to get us, you know, a little bit of help down there with some of the stuff, brush and a bunch of different things on the side of the roads.
Okay, yeah. Okay, sure, go, Ms. Sanders.
You're my neighbor, obviously, and I'm very familiar, just went through the neighborhood this morning before I came here. There's still a lot of beds, and we need, as a council, need to discuss this more in depth, not during your three-minute presentation, but I'm going to promise you that I'm going to keep pushing this up for either ordinance change or code enforcement to do that. We have a very loose policy on items that are placed out, placed out in rental properties, placed out, other people dragging stuff over across the street, you know, drag it over to Bradenton and they'll pick it up, you know? That's the motto out there. And we need to have a serious conversation about this because it's not only affecting our services to the existing customers, it's affecting the neighborhood, the view. I mean, you're building a multimillion-dollar house and you have to pick up mattresses yourself and haul them to the dump. That's not fair to you, and that's not why you're paying those exorbitant taxes and will. You'll pay, you know, an exorbitant amount, and good for you, and there are going to be more of that. So, as we, this is something that's been long overdue for discussion, so I'm going to ask that we place, today's agenda is quite full, and so, I'm going to ask that we place that, I'm going to ask the city administrator to place that to, about our trash pickup, what we pay for, what we cost us, if we need to revisit this in some way, because I'll be quite honest, it's not working. And it's not just only COVID-related, it's related to operational issues. So, you've got my ear, and it's like I said, it's my neighborhood too, and I'm pretty unhappy about it. So, if you've got any more comments, that's fine, or any other council members.
Yeah, you know, I have seen a lot of stuff go on in that neighborhood, and there's a lot of, you know, activity with some of the real estate stuff, and I'm sure that's driving the values up right now with the way the markets are. But at the end of the day, you know, I mean, that is one of the last segments of waterfront. That's what drove me down here from Pinellas is because after fifty-plus years in Pinellas, you can't find, what I found with that four acres on that property there. And especially, it's such a unique piece of property that, you know, what I'm doing there is hopefully going to help drive that area in order to get the area better off because I've seen this transformation in northeast St. Pete where I grew up at, and I've watched it, and I see the value of the homes there now, and I see the same thing happening to the south side of St. Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for coming forward. This, your situation is not unique. It's, my entire ward has the same problem. It's something I've been trying to figure out how to get my arms around for some time now. I mean, we have a, we have a driver shortage that's making our pre-existing problems look worse. So, I can tell you, I have been looking into this. Our poor city administrator, I harassed him over the holiday weekend with text on this, called him at eight oh one on Monday morning, you know? I'm trying to figure out something that can help us beyond just, you know, what you're going, and I agree with you, you know, having this crap sitting around is just, it drives to every, you know? I've got a property in my area where they put out a truckload, I mean, a dump truck load of stuff, and we pick it up and they replace it the next day. And I don't know where the crap's coming from. I mean, if there's an eight-plex there, but there's like, there's just no way these people are generating this much crap. So, we have a systemic problem that existed, our driver shortage crisis. So, thank you for coming forward. It's, I'm trying to figure out something on this.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and hopefully we can get something done on it.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, before Mr. Perry goes, Mr. Perry and I and Mr. McCollum drove around that area last week and we saw some of it, and I think that, that as both councilmen have said now, it's not an issue that is any blame to our public works or that department right now, it's a problem that this council has, and it's going to be up to this council to solve, and, you know, from the standpoint of how we do it. And obviously, sometimes how we do it is not only through code enforcement and penalty, but also more money. So, that's something that, you know, the benefit to some of our citizens of the lower taxes then creates some other issues. So, I think it's something that we have to look at strongly and figure out in a win-win situation, and like I said, this has nothing to do with, with our public works staff now. And so, I don't want Mr. McCollum to think that this is a criticism on him because he would do it all, but it's going to take more trucks or it's going to take privatization, it's going to take how we do it. So, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Peters, thanks for coming down. I can assure you that in my short eight weeks here, and probably more particularly the last six, I don't think there's one issue that's been discussed more with the mayor and the council than trash pickup, and particularly in the east side. It's a problem, I recognize it. I drove with my wife a couple of weekends ago, a few times, right into your property. It's about the second or third, actually, it's about the third time I've been there. It's a beautiful piece of property, and I understand what you're saying about the redevelopment potential, and I absolutely agree with, with about ninety-nine point nine percent of what you said. The problem that we're facing, and I have this conversation as Counselor Roth and Counselor Sanders, who call me literally probably once a day about it, and it's okay, that's what they should be doing on behalf of their constituents and in my administration, and Mr. McClellan, his folks in sanitation are doing what they can. But the problem's like a perfect storm, and what I mean by that is we have a capacity problem with drivers and CDLs. If you look at Hillsborough County, if you look at Manatee, the county itself using Waste Pro and Waste Management, there is great competition and a shortage of CDL drivers and the pay associated with it. We've increased the pay, a dollar an hour across the board. Mr. McClellan pulls rabbits out of his hat basically every weekend, as he did this weekend, trying to get additional drivers in to work the weekends and overtime and pick up the routes. And our first responsibility, of course, is to, the garbage collection itself and the solid waste, and then the yard waste. And I recognize what you're saying. What some of the councilists have pointed out, two problems outside of the capacity itself is compliance. And we have folks, and Counselor Roth gave me some photos yesterday of an apartment complex, and they've got probably, I don't know, two rollout full dumpsters of garbage, not garbage, but waste out in front of their house. Some of it's bags, some of it's furniture, some of it's yardways, some of it's this, some of it's that, and quite honestly, that's a compliance issue as well as far as getting homeowners to take responsibility. Mr. McClellan and the service will pick up these large bulk items, but of course, there's a charge associated with that. And so, we're trying to work through that stuff, but I want to assure you that it is a high priority of this council, this administration, and the people that work within it to address it. A city that doesn't look clean isn't, you know, isn't the city it wants to be, and so, we're going to work diligently to find the solutions at the various causation levels.
I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you for addressing the issue.
Thank you for coming forward.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, we have Ronald Lloyd Tompkins. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address. There is, Scott, about, and we can address this now before, but we don't have a proxy thing. You've got three minutes, and if somebody else wants to talk on three, that's fine.
That's fine.
Yes, sir, thank you.
My name is Ronald Lloyd Tompkins. My wife and I own nine eighteen Twenty-Ninth Street West in Bradenton, Florida. I'm a tax-paying property owner in the friendly city Bradenton, Florida. I'm here as a private citizen and am gainfully employed. I'm not here to waste your time or mine. I'm an Orthodox Christian, fifty-four years old, adult white male. I am a meat-and-tatoes kind of point-to-the-guy, ask anyone that knows me. I don't sugarcoat it, and I deal in facts. Every day, I deal with facts, day in, day out. I work here at the city of Bradenton Public Works and Utilities for you as one of your frontline employees. I deal with, sorry, I lost my place, but not today. However, when I'm at work, I work for you in a multitude of capacities over the last seven years, all dealing with factual information. I'm a part of the annex staff and work for the Maintenance Department, Water, Sewer, and Backflow Divisions. I was in the voice, I was the voice of the city of Bradenton Public Works the day after each of your last three hurricanes. I dealt with and still deal with and have dealt with for the last seven years all the concerned, considerate, helpful, conscientious, average, high-strung, easygoing, talking, 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 lost, homeless, indigent, illiterate, mentally disabled, physically disabled, screaming, hollering, paranoid, some delusional, angry, aggressive, threatening, abusive, and sadly blatantly racist, bigoted citizens of the city of Bradenton. I facilitate and handle all these interactions and many more in a professional, polite manner, affecting the city's position in a mutually satisfactory resolution to the issues at hand, all based on facts. Today, I'm here to state in my private capacity as a citizen of the city of Bradenton, I, as a city of Bradenton city employee, have not been afforded and/or the opportunity to a fully informed decision with regards to the city's rights regarding any potential vaccine mandate nor any other city employee that I am aware of. This is an issue that I am sure the city is considering. Of course, this is an assumption, the council is considering this. This is only an assumption, I don't know. I would feel the friendly city would want to be on the right side of history in championing all of our most deeply held inner beliefs and rights based on all the facts. Sadly, in my opinion, the ball has been dropped. It's now time to pick that ball up. This is the most fluid and dynamic time in history. This COVID issue has been thrust before us by the mayor of Tampa, Jane Castor's employee vaccine mandate on August twenty-third, 2021. The trigger has just been pulled that may potentially cause a massive staffing shortage implosion that will cripple the city of Tampa and impact the citizens of Tampa. Given the gravity of the potential monumental decision presented to the council, the likes of which I personally don't feel the council fully appreciates the gravity of the situation at hand, the consequences of this decision and the enormous ramifications, if this is decided poorly, could prove to be and are profound.
Okay, Mr. Tompkins, your time is up, and we, this council has not even addressed that, and I don't, it hasn't gone, so, the facts, but we appreciate your thoughts. We've got all of your information, so we'll go through it. Mr. Sanders?
I'd like to have all the council to make a few-second comment. I'm in favor of your proposal, and I'd like for everyone else to speak to that.
I don't know what it's supposed to be.
I don't know, this is citizen comment. We could actually, if we want to talk about this later, we can put it on a workshop or agenda, but I think right now, there's nothing that's coming in front of this.
I was just trying to preempt.
Yep, yep, nope, and we're not Tampa, so.
Why, I realize that.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Coachman, Ms. Coachman.
What I would like to say is, what I've, I've been impressed with what you, how you've brought this to us, but especially the way you listed all the different people and the different ways they can come to you. I've never heard it so wellly said, so I'd like a copy of that.
We have one.
He knows, I deal with it all the time.
Sir.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, you know, I could tell you right now, I, you know, used my opportunity on the council corner to encourage people personally, I use the term personally, encourage people to get vaccinated. I did that on purpose because I personally believe in vaccination, I want one, I.
Well, I do too, if it's medically necessary.
But the point is, I'm not, I'm not a mandate kind of guy. That's just not who I am. So, this, these, you know, I'm glad you said that you don't, I don't know, this is only an assumption, I don't know.
Right.
Not by me.
I don't.
Okay, so I'm letting you know right now, I'm not a mandate kind of guy.
That's great. That's what I want to hear.
Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, Tompkins, I want to thank you for coming forward today. I just want to thank you for the job that you do day in and day out because I know it has not been easy.
It's not.
I know that many times, by the time the citizens call us, they may not be having their best day.
No, not usually.
So, I think if they were to meet you in the line at, say, Publix, they would probably think you were a really nice guy.
I like to think so. Most of the time, I'm holding the phone out.
I understand, sir. I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, the last non-agenda item we have is Jonathan Moore. Did you want to speak? Nope, okay. No show. All right. Is there any other citizens that want to speak on non-agenda items before we move on? Thank you. Mrs. Melton?
We're asking for approval of the consent agenda, items A through M.
I'd like to remove B, C, and L.
B, C, and F. So, we have a motion for Mr. Sanders to approve the consent agenda minus B, C, and F.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had the discussion late yesterday with Public Works, and I believe we're also going to pull item M off the consent agenda.
Okay, so pull it. Okay, so does that need to be in the motion?
I'll add M to it.
Just to pull?
Removing item M.
Remove it, period, yeah.
At the request.
But the other, I'd want to discuss the other three.
Second emotion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda minus B, C, and F, and that Public Works requests to pull M. Okay?
Yes.
All right, so any further discussion? Here none. We'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. Okay, Mr. Sanders?
Okay, item B is adjustment BA twenty-one dash forty. Make sure I've got the right, twenty-one dash forty is for a line item. I just want to know what this is. It's an increase of ten million dollars. Rob, you can probably address that in general terms, in the capital fund. BA twenty-one dash forty, budget adjustment for increase of ten million dollars in the capital fund.
Committee of funds.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just have a moment to.
Sure.
Review this, thanks.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Kelly, the accounting manager just joined us, if you wanted to ask.
I think I would defer to Mr. Kelly on this. I'm pretty sure I'm aware of what this is, but I think Mr. Kelly could probably better explain this question.
But he just joined us, so he's not sure what's going on, and he's looking at me like I'm bringing him forward to a firing squad.
Equipment repair and maintenance, and electrical maintenance department. That's the line item description.
Yeah, we're just taking money out of the general fund and putting it in capital.
Yeah. I think Mr. Kelly can explain that as far as movement of the funds from the reservoir general fund to the capital fund.
Yeah, this is the, it's the ten million dollars we're moving for the reservoir property. It's, we put that in there when we sold that property a couple of years ago, and Carl's intention was since it was a capital item, we would move it to a capital fund, and going over the reserves with Mr. Perry, we felt it was time to just move that over there. You can spend it out of either place, but since we're going to use it probably for capital items, we would put it in the general capital projects fund. That's the whole intent behind the move.
Mr. Mayor, if I could explain that just further? It was carried over in general fund, which of course is more of the general spending for the city, and we thought it would be better placed and dedicated into the capital fund as it would be used for capital expenditures. I didn't want it, ten million dollars floating around in the general fund. It's that simple.
So, this has remained in the general fund and not in reserves?
Well, it was in reserves.
Reserves.
In the general fund.
So, what is our total reserves?
In the general fund, they unassigned at the end of 2020 was forty-four million.
So, now it would be thirty-four million.
Thirty-four million, but it's over in the capital projects fund where you can tap into it there.
So, we're releasing ten million dollars out of our reserve funds, and I had to find out about this one, a consent agenda. That's not, I don't like that.
Mr. Mayor and council, I don't think we're releasing it. We're probably earmarking it more appropriately in the capital fund as it should be used for capital expenditure opposed to general operating expenses. I thought that was actually more prudent to do.
I understand, but that's, that's a lot of money that I didn't know that we was going to move from reserves to the capital expenditure fund, and I don't have a clue what we earmarked it for. Have you got any idea what we're going to spend it on?
Well, some of it.
Have we told the public for a public meeting that we're lowering our reserves and said, if we have a hurricane, maybe we won't have enough money to clean up this trash that we're already having a problem with?
We have a emergency reserve in the general fund, ten percent. That's over four million dollars, just for emergencies.
That won't go very far if a hurricane hits, but anyway, anytime we reduce the reserve funds by that kind of money, should take a considerable amount of time from this council to discuss it, and that's what I'm asking.
Mr. Roth?
I was here when we sold the property. It was a long, painful ordeal. I know that what our intention was at the time was since, and we took a lot of public criticism for selling the property, which was surplus property ten miles from the city. There was no reason for us to hold on to it, and to be honest, it was a windfall for the city. You know, we spent nine hundred thousand, Mayor Evers bought that for nine hundred-plus-thousand, we sold it for ten million. That's, that's good, good prudent financial oversight as far as I'm concerned.
Yes.
We decided, since it was considered a strategic financial windfall, that we were going to use it for capital outline. Instead of just sticking it in in the general fund, which can go here, there, or everywhere, we decided we were going to put it in, you know, a capital, so that basically, we had hard property, we're going to use it only for hard property. We're not going to, we're not Twitter it away. So, I mean, I think that what you're doing is in compliance with my intention of my oversight of this entire process, which included a sale, which was highly contested. So, I mean, I don't, you know, whether it should have been on a, I don't know whether, you know, how, the process of getting it here or there is one thing, you know, that's process, that may be a good point, but I mean, I think that this particular thing is in compliance with exactly what I, what I intended when I gave my vote at the time. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Kelly, when did we sell that property, was it 2014?
No, it was, I think, eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen, when we sold that?
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago.
Okay, so why didn't we put it in capital reserves then?
Just.
I think Mr. Perry, because I, you know, I saw this on the agenda, but I think he's just trying to clean it up in some of our accounting things, and I was on the council then, from the standpoint of the monies, to put it into the right spot, trying to just, and I think it was left, and this is my opinion, from when I was on the council with Mr. Roth, that it was left there because we were doing, so the parking lot, the parking garage, some of the money was going to be used for that, and I think it just, I mean, you guys are just trying to clean it up, is what I.
All right, I like to have a motion to table this for further discussion somewhere in the near future before we pull this out, before we pull this ten million dollars out.
Then, do we got a motion to table, is there a second?
I guess I can second it for the point of discussion, but it's.
Well, I mean, once it's tabled, we just go right to the vote, so.
Table it for, not a specific date, you know, it can be untabled at another council meeting, but I'd like to have more discussion on this, it's too big a dollar item to, you know, do it the way we're doing it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to table, we'll start the vote in Ward three?
Yeah.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
No.
Two?
No, if we had had a specific date that it was tabled to, I might have supported the motion.
Okay, moving on, item C?
Item C, that's me in it, okay. Item C is sprinkler heads for the parking, judicial parking garage, somebody bring me up to speed here a little bit, I thought that that was no longer our responsibility.
I, I'm.
C is Ernst &amp; Young.
I'm sorry?
C is Ernst &amp; Young.
Oh, C is Ernst &amp; Young, I'm sorry, sorry, Ernst &amp; Young, this, who's, Mr. Perry, you've probably negotiated this with, as a piggyback from the county, it's, you know, a hundred pages, says it's a maximum seventy-five thousand dollars, I'll be honest with you, I haven't read it in detail enough to be, but you can tell me what the basics are for this, I'd like to know, because I'd just like to know.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Sanders, this is basically the agreement that we have with Ernst &amp; Young to basically piggyback on the county contract for an assessment, evaluation, and technical assistance in setting up our American Recovery Act money, our ARPA money, and it's, as you may remember, I presented this to council before, in an estimated cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the, over the first few years of this ten point eight million dollars that we've been awarded under the interim rules of the ARPA program, and it involves a great deal of technical analysis of what the allowable expensing categories are, what we can spend the money on, how we can spend the money, how we have to account for the money, and be in compliance with the guidelines. Ernst &amp; Young, of course, is a national company with expertise in a very technical field of this particular grant, it's a grant that's in the probably trillions of dollars on a national level through this, you know, state, county, local government, and I think it's important, basically, to have that type of proficiency and technical assistance in trying to set up the right processes to decide how to administer the grant, and that's what, that's what Ernst &amp; Young does, this is the first part of it, this is a seventy-five thousand dollar contract to come in, do a rapid assessment of where we're at, and so we can start seeing how we would have to set up processes and categories in the accounting and administration of these funds over the course of the next three to four years, I believe the interim rule provides for use through the FY 2026 period, so that's what this is, and again, I had taken it to council previously, I think it was on a workshop item, and gave a kind of a deeper dive into it.
Right, well, I understand, we're piggybacking off where we get.
Yes, sir.
So, we didn't have to RFQ it to put it out for other people, this was the preferred, selected accounting firm to do this, but it, the initial process is for the ten million dollars that we, we received half of it, we'll receive another five million next year, I believe, and so is this for the first part of it, what's the, when's it start and when's it end?
That's, they're, they're operating, the federal government with these funds is operating under an interim rule that basically allows us to take the money that's already been funded to the city, that's sitting in the city accounts right now, ten million dollars plus, and start putting together a plan on how to utilize those funds within program guidelines, specific categories that I discussed earlier, water, sewer, stormwater, resiliency within that category, broadband, PPE, other types of categories, and so, to answer your question, when we can get moving on that immediately, the spend period runs through 2026, there's all kinds of technical rules that deal with things like supplantation, meaning that if we've already budgeted something for in our budget, can we use this, or do we supplant the funds that are already there, those are the technical aspects that have got to be addressed, and quite honestly, internally, both the city of Bradenton, probably Manatee County, and a host of other local governments really don't have the expertise to read CFRs, interim rules, and grant administration memorandum that the changes comes down in different formats and the like, and so, we think Ernst &amp; Young can help us do that.
So, by mentioning the start date, I mean.
Yes, sir.
If we sign this, we agree to this, when will they start, will they start immediately? And when will they be asking for funding?
They would, they would start very quickly, I imagine, once the contract is in place, they're available, and their proposal did have pretty much an immediate start date, particularly as I remember it, it had six different visits where they would come into the city and start formulating our plans for grant administration.
When's the first visit?
I don't know, I don't think we have a date for the first visit as of yet, because again, we're just have the contract in place, if we don't do the contract today, we don't have a first visit.
So, we're, we're funding this on an hourly rate of three hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, three hundred an hour, two forty, about eight hundred dollars per hour for consulting work, and we don't have a specific plan on how, what we want them to do for us?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilor Sanders, that's incorrect, those rates that you just cited at eight hundred dollars per hour would involve hourly rates from the senior principal to the junior associate, to the paralegal, to the, the administrative support, so when you explain that this is eight hundred dollars per hour, that's not correct, there is hourly billing for each one of those particular individuals' expertise, and it was incorporated into what the overall rapid attack assessment would involve, again, six meetings, interaction with the city, the city's personnel in trying to put together this plan, and so, we don't think, and as the contract states, that this first effort, taking somewhere on the order of probably three, four months, would exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
Well, it calls for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, where I just read this, is closer to a thousand dollars an hour, but if we don't, do we have time to digest this and get more specifics, or are we anxious to get started on this tomorrow?
We got ten point eight million dollars in the bank, if you want it to sit there, you can let it sit there for three years, I think you would be in jeopardy of losing it at some point for inaction, and I think there's competition for that money, I think our sister agencies around the region.
Well, we've already got.
Would be more than willing to probably take some of our money, I think it's incumbent upon us to move post haste fast on this deal.
Well, we got ten point eight million dollars, but we've got till 2026 to spend it, what's the hurry to sign this contract?
Things change in the grant world, and I don't know, you know, in my thirty-five years in government, I guess if there's one thing I could say, it's that Washington is somewhat unpredictable.
Oh, that's an understatement.
And, and I think we'd all agree with that, and that's why I think it's incumbent upon the city to begin to look at how to utilize these, these funds in the most appropriate manner, and with the right proper administration behind them.
So, would it be permissible to review this one more time before we vote on it?
It's the call of the council.
Yeah, I understand.
Sure, I can't give you advice anymore than I have.
All right, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, thank you, one thing, so, we talk a lot, we have meetings, we discussed this after we, when we firmly talked about this in the council to move towards Ernst &amp; Young, at the beginning, you were a little, they were, they were kind of dragging their feet on getting us the contract, I mean, is that, has that resolved itself?
It has resolved itself.
Do you feel like they're there now, because I don't want, I'm concerned with getting involved with a corporation or, you know, an entity that's, that's so busy that we're going to become, you know, later in their list, you know, I'm, personally, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward on this because I want to, I want to get the money spent, I mean, I spent the whole first ten years of my term chasing federal dollars, you know, for a major flood control project, that I'm not, I'm not going to turn around at the end of my terms and, you know, let money slip through my fingers, so, my only concern was whether you feel that they're going to earnestly, you know, make sure that we get, we receive the proper paperwork to, you know, get this funds, you know, spent properly so we don't deal with a clawback, I'm more concerned about their performance level than I am the contract itself right now.
I think there's two pieces, Mr. Mayor, Councilor, off to that, is their performance level and our performance level, and their performance level is going to help us develop our performance level, it's not, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, it's just that we don't have the technical expertise, and they're a firm that does, and if we, if we want to slow play it, we can slow play it, there's risk involved in that, as I pointed out, and if we want to get busy, we can get busy, and that's what's before this council.
Yeah, I'm not asking to slow play it, I'm asking it to have a couple of weeks and maybe bring Ernst &amp; Young in to describe what their contract is and what our expectations are versus voting on it, when, I don't know, I would tell you, I don't know.
I've got a couple other councils.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Sanders, I got a couple other before we're going to go.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agreement for the mayor's signature for the piggyback agreement for Ernst &amp; Young.
Second, discussion.
Motion in the second, discussion, Ms. Barnaby?
Well, you made the motion, do you have more discussion?
No.
Okay, I, I did read this this weekend, because it was a long weekend, and for anybody that wants to read it, if you're having trouble sleeping, let me know, we need this money. In Ward two, there is a flooding project that's now happening almost every day, and there is, there's a project in place that is shovel-ready, and we just need the half a million dollars to get it going, so, I believe there, I mean, Ernst &amp; Young is a national corporation that works pretty well most of the time, I don't remember any major, major scandals attached to them, so, for the money that we're putting forward, I think we're getting, going to have a tremendous bang for the buck, and it will make a huge difference in our community, and I will support, as seconding it, I will support the motion.
I don't disagree.
Let me go to Ms. Coachman first.
Okay.
Just to kind of piggyback on what Councilwoman Barnaby said, we need this money, and we definitely need guidance in how to spend this money, because if we make a mistake, we'll lose it, or have to pay it back, so.
Or end up wearing striped pajamas, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanders?
We already have this money, just for the record, it's in our bank, we've got till 2026 to spend it, I don't want to wait till 2026, matter of fact, I've encouraged us to try to go ahead and spend some of it already, that's something we can do, if we want professional advice, I think that's great, I, but to, to bring this on a consent agenda and force me to make a vote on it without vetting it is not right, and if you tell me we can't wait a couple of weeks, shame on you, because that's ten million dollars, and I don't know that we, we have enough details here that I know what I'm buying, and I'm object to that motion, but I'd like to have my own motion to table this for two weeks.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, and we're, at this time, we're going to go to the vote, it's a motion to approve the Ernst &amp; Young contract that Mr. Perry has researched and done, we'll start the vote in Ward four?
No.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yeah, I'm going to qualify my answer with yes, that we already had the discussion over the contract, that this is, we already had this meeting as to whether we were going to do business with Ernst &amp; Young, this is just the approval of the agreement that was finalized, so, I'm, I'm voting on the agreement of the previous council discussion that we already had.
So, motion carries four to one, Mr. Sanders, F, Housing and Community Development Resolution?
Okay, that was item?
F.
No, that, that's item F, that's not.
Yeah, F is, you had asked for F to be pulled.
No, I didn't, I asked for I.
No, you said F, and the motion was F.
All right, I'm sorry, I, because where I said I, because he interrupted and said M needed to be pulled.
Mrs. Melton?
Melton, did I say I, or?
You said F.
I said F, all right.
And I has already been approved.
So, we need a motion to approve F then?
Okay.
Move to approve, Saka.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Housing and Community Development by Mrs. Barnaby, and second by Ms. Coker, is there any further discussion? All in favor, or, excuse me, starting in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yeah.
Four?
Yes.
Approved, okay, all right, moving forward, we're going to go to Business, Advertising, Petition Hearings and Communications, Mr. Rudisell, did you want Mrs. Melton to read it into the record?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, accepting and declaring certain city property as a park to be known as Curry Park, amending Chapter sixty-two, Article four, Section sixty-two dash eighty-two, to prohibit fishing, bathing, swimming, wading, or otherwise recreationally using the waters at or adjoining Curry Park, amending, pardon me, amending sixty-two dash eighty-three to designate hours for Curry Park, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is that Mr. Rudisell, you want to give us synopsis?
This is, obviously, we were in litigation for several years related to this piece of property, the result of that litigation was a settlement agreement wherein the city agreed to accept title to this property, subject to certain restrictions, by moving forward with the restrictions that are proposed with this ordinance, the city would be able to move on to the next step, which would be the landscaping and removal of the fence, which I think was the ultimate, ultimate goal.
Okay, so, any council discussion, go to public comment, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, it's been, what, four, four years in the making, and thank you for all the work we've gotten to get here, it's, yeah, this is the last part of mitigation, years and years and years of legal wrangling, and it's not just, so this is, this is restoring to this historic neighborhood, the waterfront view, which the street was called Sunset Avenue, so it was purposely, you know, the, the intent of the builder was to leave this open for the people in the interior of his, his view to be able to go down and enjoy the sunset, a, a property owner who happened to be a lawyer, you know, snagged the property, and we've been, all these years on getting it back, and it's not just, it's not just the fence, it was the way it was done, it was an insult to the neighborhood, it was the, some, a right had been taken away from them, so it's a long, you know, the previous council had, had supported the citizens' request to restore their rights, which I see this as a justice that's been, you know, returned, and it's, it's not only the fence, I mean, there was a riprap that was put in there, it was intentionally, it's like walking through a minefield, so it's like, there's, there's much work to be done to restore this back, and I think what's going to be done is a beautiful addition to the neighborhood with a view and certain things, so that, you know, it's, it's a good solution to an unfortunate situation that's been going on for way too long, so, I, you know, support the council to carry forward with this.
Okay, so, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Okay, so, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, Ordinance 3086. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Ordinance 3086, to create the Curry Park.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Sanders, got the second and first?
Discussion.
Okay, discussion, Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Rudicel, this piece of property is approximately how big?
I think it's about 40 feet by, what is it? I was going to say 50 by 40.
Just so the public knows that this is probably one of the most expensive properties we've bought, bought, three years of litigation, I don't know, thousands of dollars spent on this that shouldn't have happened, but just FYI, you know, I, I'm, I'm for this because it shouldn't ever happen to begin with, somebody went in and land, and land grabbed it and, yeah, I support this. But it's, just, just so you know, it's the, it's the end of a road that faces the Manatee River, should never have happened, but we've fixed it, but it cost a lot of money to get that done. That's all I have.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Carries five to zero. All right, next, we have Ordinance 3087, and I know that Ms. Melton will read it into the record.
An ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part One, Charter and Related Laws, Subpart B, Related Laws, Article Four, Police Officers Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Section Six, Benefit Amount and Eligibility, amending Section Seven, Pre-Retirement Death, amending Section Ten, Optional Forms of Benefits, amending Section Sixteen, Minimum Distribution of Benefits, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Here With, and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay, I know originally Mr. Christiansen couldn't be here for health reasons, but he was going to reach out and this was sent out to everybody. Is there any questions by the council or just go right to public comment or public hearing? All right, we'll go right to public hearing. Open the public hearing, Ordinance 3087. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move for approval of Ordinance 3087, the Police Officers Retirement System Amendment.
Our second, second, Mrs. Coachman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote, Ward Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
All right, carries five to zero. All right, now, Mrs. Melton, do you want to administer, administration of the oath?
Sure. Anyone wishing to address the city council during the following public hearing will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate?
I thought it was me. Thank you. All right, moving forward, Mrs. Singer?
Might as well get some. Good morning. Myra Schwartz, Community Development and zoning manager. I have a brief presentation for... This is case number SP 212865. It is a request by the applicant, Adam Jacobson, of JBHF FLLC, agent for the owner. The owner was originally Westminster Presbyterian Church and now is Jordan Creek at Bradenton West LLC. It's a request for a preliminary subdivision plat, for a subdivision comprised of 33 detached single-family dwellings. The location is 311 19th Avenue West, currently the site of the old Westminster Presbyterian Church, which is now not in use anymore. Future land use category is residential low with a base density of six units per acre. The property is about 9.92 acres, so the maximum allowed density for this site is 59 units. Excuse me. The zoning is R1, single-family residential. The applicant has requested a preliminary subdivision plat comprised of 33 detached single-family dwellings on more or less 9.92 acres. The plat delineates a new street, which connects 29th Street West and 31st Street West with the extension of 20th Avenue West. It includes infrastructure easements and common open space. The site's within flood zone X or, and that means that it's at the limits of the base flood and the .2% annual chance or the 500-year flood. The plat layout, I hope you can see this well, you've got 33 individual fee simple lots that are delineated with this plat and a road, a new street, 20th Avenue West, which is connecting through, you have a, your stormwater area down here, which is also, there's also a recreation area. Sidewalks are going to be included around the perimeter here, on the three sides, as well as interior to the 20th Avenue connection. Dry retention pond and the recreation area is going to be tree-benched green space and that will be private to the residents of the development. Probably can't read this, it is the data that shows that the dimensional requirements are compliant with the R1 dimensional standards. We have another layout here overlaid on, on a Google Earth aerial so that you can see how this development is going to fit into the existing grid of the neighborhood. Excuse me, Planning Commission did ask me to show you the old plats, the original plats, and how the original lots from years ago were designed here. And there were two plats that comprised this parcel. One was the I to K subdivision from, plotted in 1957, which included 75 by 107-foot lots. You can see here is a close-up of the plat itself. It did include, well, actually, it did not include a central area here that was just not part of the plat, but it did include your 20 lots.
Do you know what year that drawing was?
The, there was another plat here. You can see here is the square of the parcel in question. This was a larger plat, a straight grid of 55 by 141 lots. There was one, or two blocks here, well, one block that was split by a street, which was on the east side of the parcel. Now, this was never developed, but this was the original layout of the lots, for the smaller lots of 55 by 141, which is just an example of how it shows you that there is such a wide variety of sizes here and widths throughout the city and particularly on the west side of the city where there's many different subdivisions. And put together, this is what it would have looked like had it been developed. This is all developed, but these two blocks were not, and this row, one row was not, the others were. The ALTA survey doesn't show you a lot of detail here, except that it is current, does show that there were easements that have been vacated in the past. I'm going to briefly go over what the land use regulations requires for a preliminary subdivision plat. It requires for, when there, when there are more than five lots and where a new street's created, then a preliminary plat is required. Impacts, projections of impacts are submitted for review, and there are standards that must be met, basic standards that must be met for a plat, that include lot dimensions, streets, natural and man-made features of the site, drainage easements, and recreation areas. The lots, there are 33 lots, they meet and meet or exceed the dimensional requirements of the land use regulations, Schedule 3.2.2.1. The proposed density is less than the maximum 59 units that may be allowed for the site. The plat provides an extension of 20th Avenue West and connects 29th Street West and 31st Street West. The street and the infrastructure will be constructed to City of Bradenton standards and will be dedicated to the public at the time of the final plat. The new local street will meet the required width of 50 feet. Excuse me. Natural and man-made features of the site, a man-made retention pond will be constructed at the south side of the development. A tree survey and a tree removal plan will be submitted along with a landscape plan for evaluation at the time of site improvement permitting, with tree replacement to be in accordance with Section 2.2.3.1 of the land use regulations. Protected trees that currently provide landscape for the church site will be preserved to the extent possible. 29 protected trees are to be removed, 52 protected trees are to be preserved, and there are no wetlands associated with this site. Drainage facilities are proposed to meet the Southwest Florida Water Management District specifications. This will again be reviewed at the time of site improvement permit. Easements are included to accommodate public utilities and include sewer, water, and drainage for each lot in the subdivision. The location of a 10 by 10 signage easement for a development identification sign will be determined at the time of site improvement permits for the best location. All easements will be recorded with the final plat. Total recreation space provided exceeds the requirement of one acre per 200 dwelling units, and that's .16 acres, providing pretty much half an acre. Recreation space will include green space with canopy trees and benches. Some of the canopy trees are existing and preserved near the stormwater pond area and they'll be private to the development, as I said earlier. Sewer and water will be provided by the city and there's adequate capacity to serve the subdivision at this time. And schools, there is adequate capacity for school services. It has been reviewed by the school board. Should the preliminary plat be approved today, then review and approval of a site improvement plan will be the next step, and then the final subdivision plat may be submitted upon approval of the site improvement permit for final approval here by city council and recording. Based upon the requirements of Land Use Regulations, Sections 2.2.11, subdivision plat approval and 4.2.1 subdivision of land design standards, staff is recommending approval of SU 212865. Planning Commission did meet in public hearing on August 18th, and after hearing staff and applicant presentations, as well as public comment, voted unanimously to recommend approval of SU 212865. I can answer any questions you have, and applicant is here as well. Yes, sir?
Thank you. For starters, this is more information that I've received on this since I've been bombarded with emails and, you know, much, much debate. You know, it's been gone through the Planning Commission, which is not part of my purview to supervise them. I know that they've made decisions. This has gone on, we did not have a planning director when this all started. Is what's it been, has it been a year at this point?
Not quite, since last October.
Okay, so, it's been a long time. We didn't have a planning director. I want to compliment staff and the planning department. I know our, our point person on this, Marshall, is no longer with us, so, you know, I, I feel like it's been hard for me to be in a position of trying to figure out what's going on with this when, to be honest, there's been, it's been, I've, I've had a void of, of information. So, I've received more today than I have in close to a year, so thank you for that. So, you showed me a site, a plat, a city plats that went down to 1925, 1957, that's the year I was born and I'm pretty old.
1955 or 57?
57, it said, 1957, that's my year. That's my year, right there.
Speak for yourself.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Just a fact, ma'am. And also, so, so when the church was built, it would have had to go for special use permit, correct? I mean, it was plotted property.
It likely would have, but that's uncertain because at that time, I really don't know what the code was. But in R1 now, a special, a church is a special use.
Right, so, I mean.
That's correct.
From what I understand, that would have, so, this was plotted land that probably got a special use and no longer carries.
I'm not, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but there, back in 1957 and 1960.
1925.
Well, but what I'm saying is, the state didn't require us to do certain things at that point in time, so I, I just, that, I don't want any, anyone to assume that the regulations that we have now are what they were under then.
Okay, good point. So, anyway, my, my, my point is this was once plotted, so, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out where, this is the first chance I've had to ask questions about this and figure out where I'm going to be asked to make a, a decision that's going to be, you know, it's, it's unfortunate the church ceased to exist. It was a nice benefit for everybody, but that being said. And then you mentioned that trees are going to be removed, will that, will that money go into the tree fund?
They'll present a landscape plan at the time of site improvement permit, and it'll be worked out depending on what they replant. It becomes a balance when we do a development like this, where they're required to replace the trees, either with trees according to the schedule in the land use regulations or $200 per replacement tree into the tree fund. So, that works out as a balance during the site improvement.
Okay, and then the, the, this is the first diagrams I've received, thank you very much. So, there's the property, would it be to the south? The, the, the big green space, what is the, so, we're calling it recreation, is that, is that drainage and recreation? What is it?
It, the whole area is, yes, they're not exactly combined, they are separate. You can see some delineation of the drainage pond here, and then the recreation area is the southern walkway, basically, that will be private to the development.
Is that going to be a wet pond or a dry?
It's, I believe it's going to be a dry pond. Again, this is something that will be determined at site improvement permit. This is a conceptual drawing of what may be. What you're approving today is a plat for the lots themselves with a conceptual site plan. Once, if this is approved, then buildings will come through as permits and they must be compliant because this is a straight plat, it's not a PDP.
I mean, this, I, I have to ask, because this is the first chance I've seen.
Certainly.
This, so, so it's a dry pond, meaning it probably will not have water in it most of the time. When, when you have a big rain, there'll be a little puddle there, but for the most part, because I, I mean, I see that as a, you know, I know that this, this neighborhood has said that, you know, they've had the use of this large property for some time now and it's being taken away from them, which, it was privately owned, it might have been a church, but it was still private property. It's, it's going from private property to private property. But, you know, I look at that big green strip as...
Patrick, could you move up a little closer so?
I use, I look at that big green strip as, you know, something that, you know, children will probably be able to play soccer on and stuff like that most, most of the year, except for after a big rain, there'll probably be a puddle, is what I'm, the question I'm getting is that that's...
That will be determined at site improvement. That was where I was going, I apologize, with the permits, with a site improvement permit, it has to be compliant with SWIFTMUD.
Yeah.
And so, that will be the determination in the review.
I mean, will they require it to be a wet pond? I mean, it's, it's...
I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
...possible to have unless we're going to dig down until we have water.
The, perhaps the agent can answer that better, but my understanding is that that would be better determined at the time of the site improvement plan. This is conceptual. It has to be compliant with SWIFTMUD regulations. So, it's not at that stage yet.
Okay, and then, I mean, I have to ask questions because first, I've seen it. So, I know there was wrangling going on over 50 by 75 lots. We amended it to where it's, it's now 50 by 75. It was going to, at one point, there was a request to make them smaller. I see some of these lots are oversized, is that correct?
All of the lots are oversized and with, if you want to call it oversized, they're compliant with the requirement for a lot with a building line, which is different from the lot width at frontage and is a difficult thing to understand at this point in our land use regulations. What we believe is that over time, that lot width, when the land use regulations were amended in 2010, the R1 used to be broken up into R1A, R1B, R1C, and each had a different lot width, different requirements, depending on the neighborhood, but it was all put together into one R1, a single R1. But what remained was the lot with the building line of 75 feet and a lot with a frontage of 50 feet, which didn't make sense unless you had a triangular lot or a cul-de-sac.
Okay, so, just as an example, you got the, the example in front of you. So, I'm assuming that like one and two are 50 by 75 minimum lot size. When you go three, four, five, six, seven, 11, 10, 14... When you go 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 11, 10, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, are those, those must be larger, right?
Some, yeah, they're varying lot widths. I'm not sure if you'll be able to see at this level, but the lots are of different size, or different types.
It looks like about a half, well, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 10, 11, 12, so it looks like a dozen of them are probably more like 100-foot?
In length, yes.
Okay, and then, and then the other thing that I see that you've done is added a street in the middle of that?
That's right.
I was not aware that was, I'm all for city grids. I mean, I'm glad to see that, that happen, because I, I believe in grids, so. And that would be a city street?
Yes, that'll be a public street.
Okay.
I just wanted to make one comment before we move forward for the public, that at the time that all of this came in originally, and that, you know, and there were some comments that, some emails I saw recently, that said that we weren't responding, but unfortunately, in some of these situations, we can't respond. So it's not that we're not getting the emails, but by responding, it could then jeopardize the vote that this council could have to make. They might have to recuse themselves. So some of it is that we're not, not listening, we just can't respond publicly, because, until it comes up with quasi judicial. Am I correct on that, Mr. Rudisso?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, and, and on that note, thank you, because I, I did, these were constituents of mine. I mean, there were times when I, I answered questions and all, I thought as best I could, and really, the questions were about the Planning Commission, which I had no involvement of, and I know that there were, you know, accusations made, which I, I understand, you know, fear is a powerful force, but I, I, you know, I, I know that at one point, I saw an email where I was obviously misquoted, so I just want to put that out there.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I don't know if these questions, it might be too early to know, but is this going to be a deed restricted community? Do we know that?
I'll let the applicant answer that question specifically.
And I was also wondering about any fencing? Was there going to be any fencing around that stormwater area? Is that still too soon? Might be.
Let's let the applicant answer that question as well. It will be a private recreation area. It may be, I believe there will be gates at either end, but we can have the applicant confirm that.
Okay.
Anything else before we move forward? So at this time, we bring the applicant up to give some discussion? Thank you, Myra.
Hear me just one second here. Kyle Grimes, for the record, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Grimes Galvano, and I have been sworn. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, JBHFF LLC. With me today, we have Mr. Adam Jacobson, who is the agent for the applicant, as well as agent for the new owner, which is Jordan Creek at Bradenton West LLC. We also have with us today, Mr. Matt Morris, engineer on the project, so if we have any technical questions, I may have him come up and give me a hand. We're here today on a request for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for 33 single-family detached dwellings, and I apologize, some of this will be a little repetitive. Myra did a great job on her presentation, so thank you for that. The subject site is located along 19th Avenue West between 31st Street West and 29th Street. As you heard, this was the previous site of the Westminster Presbyterian Church, which is still there, however, the doors were closed back in May of last year. They have since moved out in West Bradenton, I believe joining with another church, but I'm not, not certain. The property has since been sold to the entity controlled by our client, Mr. Adam Jacobson and the applicant, JBHFF LLC. We have updated all the affidavits and everything since the original application to reflect that. The subject site is currently zoned R1, single-family residential, with a future land use category of low-density residential. Your comprehensive plan has envisioned this site for relatively lower-density residential uses with the maximum of six dwelling units per acre. We are well under that with the proposed subdivision plat, coming in a little over three units the acre with our 33 dwelling units. The applicant, as you, as you heard, originally did submit an application for 44 lots with a minimum width of 50. It was, there was a little bit of confusion discrepancy with the code, we were under the impression it was allowed, but after all that went through, he went back to the drawing board and, and has now presented 33 lots with a minimum lot width of 75 feet. To answer your previous question, Mr. Roth, the, all of the lots do meet the minimum-size requirements, or exceed the minimum-size requirements in your R1 zoning district. I believe the smallest lot is a little over 8,000 square feet, with the, the minimum being 7,200 in this R1 zoning district. So the site includes the extension of 20th Avenue through the site. It will be public, we're not gating this area, so this is adding to the roadway network here with a, another public right-of-way of 50 feet. And the, the site is currently planned for a minimum of 1,500 square-foot homes. We've found that they're compatible with the surrounding area. We do have the, the similar grid system in the surrounding neighborhoods, and so we are looking to carry that forward. As, as you heard from Ms. Schwartz, all of the lots are proposed to meet every dimensional criteria in the R1 zoning district, including minimum lot widths, minimum lot sizes, and the proposed units on the, on the, the individual lots will meet the minimum-size requirements. We have reviewed the staff report, and we agree with its findings that this preliminary subdivision plat is in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan and Land Use Regulations, and we respectfully request for your approval today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or get into any more detail.
Councilor McCoker?
Okay, if, if I might, the questions I had, will this be a deed restricted community?
Right now, he's not planning on doing deed restrictions, so it's, it will...
Okay, okay. And what about any fencing planned for...
Again, we're in the, you know, preliminary subdivision plat, he hasn't gotten all the way through that exact site plan development as to where, or if they'll have fences, it may come down to individual lots, but right now, we're not too sure, we haven't gotten all the way through that site plan stage.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Grimes, you, you all have not come to the city and asked us for any type of funding for this, so I'm making the assumption that these are market-value homes, they will not be low-cost, and it won't be low-housing, low-fund, you know, no Section 8?
That is correct. We do not, there were some questions about that at Planning Commission, do not have plans to do affordable housing. We haven't come looking for funding to do the affordable housing, or affordable housing incentives. This is market rate. I believe their current goal is around the 300 and 350, but of course, market determines that as we go forward, and as he goes a little more detailed into the site plans.
Okay. I may have some more questions later, when I hear something that someone brings up that triggers something, but that's what I've got right now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, thank you. So, as I stated earlier, that the, you know, the citizens, you know, the existing neighborhood and all, they, they had the use of this property that belonged to a church, but it was unfenced and, you know, nice place, it was a nice amenity that someone else's cost. So as we move forward, and I keep talking about the landscape and recreation area, and then the dry, you know, dry retention pond, which is going to be dry most of the year. I mean, I, I've seen these, they usually are dry all the time. It's just a SWIFTMUD regulation. I would, so, it would be my hope, moving forward, you know, that considering the neighbors had use of a large strip of land, and this is now going to be land that's, you know, set aside, I would, I would hope it would be open, that it would be, I mean, I would hope that I'm seeing, you know, someone that wants, that concerns, that you recognize that this existing neighborhood has issues. They would like to see nothing happening here. So we're, we're trying to figure out how to get, you know, meet in the middle. I would hope that there is a, you know, a, no desire whatsoever to try to privatize this little green space, just, it would be salt-in-the-wound kind of deal.
It will be owned privately, per the regulations, to keep it as open space, keep it, you know, per the requirements of the code, keep those, all your drainage areas in there, so it will be owned privately and passed through to the...
Yeah.
The, the homeowners eventually, you know, when, when our client gets finished with the, the development. Like we said, we're not putting fences around the property, or gating the, the property, but, you know, as it goes forward, if those owners allow for people to walk through there, as we see a lot of places, you know, I wouldn't be surprised, but it's not a, a open restrict, or, it's not something we can dedicate to the public, the city, for instance, as a park.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not saying that, but you know, it's like, okay, I, I have a corner lot. People come around and, and walk, cut across my yard, or they have their dogs on my yard all the time. Okay, I could fence the yard. I'm not going to do that, because I'm a, I'm a, I'm a good neighbor, you know? I would hope there's an attempt to be good neighbors here.
Absolutely, I mean, our, our client is trying to build a, a nice development in this area that's compatible with it, you know, eventually, when he finishes project, he'll, it'll turn it over to the, the homeowners, but, you know, so he can't give the full intent of what they will do down the road, but as they're saying right now, he has no intention to make it gated off, can't walk through there at all, so.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, my, just to clarify, my question about fencing was, I wanted to make sure it wasn't just going to have chain link around, I, you know, I'd like to see, no chain link. And, and as far as the deed restrictions, I, I wish they would consider it, I think it would increase the property values, and a lot of the issues that we get, that we have to deal with, are taken care of in deed-restricted neighborhoods, as far as VRBOs and, you know, leaving things on the trash and things like that, so I, I think it'll raise the property values, if, if they would consider doing a, you know, a deed restriction on it, so that was just my point on that. I think you've, you've got a great plan here, and, you know, it could have been a lot more dense, probably, so I'm in, I mean, I'm in favor of it, but those were my two comments.
Yeah, I'll talk with our client about the deed restrictions as we move forward through the...
All right, so thank you. We'll go to, go to the public hearing.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, before he leaves, I have one more question. You know, in, in the absence of fact, rumor is king, there was something going around the community that the city turned down an offer to buy it, buy this property as a park. At any point in time, I can't find anywhere in our records that we were even offered that opportunity. I don't know how, how your, your client found that this property was going to become available. It's, it's, again, while it's a church, it was private property, and if you want to sell your home, you don't come to the city and ask us for permission to sell it, and you don't go to your neighbor and ask them for permission to sell it, but, and I don't know if you can speak to how this came about, but the city, as far as everything I can find, was never even brought into the discussion.
Well, and, and we don't, I don't represent the church at all, so just want to make sure that's out, out there, but as far as what methods they went to get all the property out on the market, I'm, I'm not sure what levels they went to. I was looking through some of their documents on their website after seeing some of those comments. I did see one, one of their newsletters where they were giving an update on the sale, indicating that they had had several entrant, verbal interest from several churches, but no offers were acceptable to them. So I know they, they, from, you know, I can't speak to the validity of that, but it, I could understand it, and it seems as though they went and tried to go and find different churches and things to step in, and but weren't able to, to get a deal, and our client, you know, is a, is a developer, went to the property and entered into negotiations and, and purchased it.
Understood.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. I have two cards, and we'll also afford the audience an opportunity at that, but the first one is for Stephanie Unger, and then please just confirm that you were sworn in, and, and you'll have three minutes.
I've been sworn in.
Okay, come on now. Morning. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Stephanie Unger, address is 1806 29th Street West.
Ms. Unger, I don't mean to interrupt, can you pull the microphone down, just so it can be heard better on...
Okay, is that better?
Thank you, yes.
I've lived there since 1974. I'm opposed to the redevelopment of the property at 311 19th Avenue. The church parcel is in the middle of an old-established neighborhood, there's no other vacant land in the area for development. Adam Jacobson stated in his March 8th letter to us residents that he is, quote, "Looking forward-serving your community by continuing and preserving its current residential aesthetics, neighborhood feel, and sense of continuity with the surrounding homes," end quote. Instead, he submitted a site plan that didn't comply with our city LURs. With his letter was, quote, "A rendering of the homes that will be built on the site," end quote. A picture of two homes appearing to be the same model, having two different roof types. At the August Planning Commission meeting, Commissioner Gallo said that he would like to see a variety of houses built that will be reflective of the surrounding homes' different styles, faces, and colors. Adam's disregard for our neighborhood is reflected by his lack of maintenance of the property and building, as we watch the decline of property aesthetics and the sanctuary itself fall apart. The question was asked at the Planning Commissioners meeting why there was never a for-sale sign posted at the church. We'd like to know if there was an agreement that exists with Adam to be notified when property in the city becomes available for sale. The residents were disappointed that the city didn't get involved in being able to purchase the property to make it into a park. We, I was the one that talked to church personnel and was told that they had asked the city. I was also told by the city that they never were, confirming what Ms. Barnaby just said. A few of my concerns about the development are, and you are aware of them from some emails I sent. The proposed different planted lot sizes, easements and their effect on the required 75-foot lot building width, how many of the 97 trees will be saved, and the increased weekday traffic of 336 daily trips, as per Landisevens Trip Generation estimate. Mr. Gallo said lots 10 and 11 should be removed because the adjacent lots have shallow backyards, creating unsightly storage issues. If lots 10 and 11 are removed, lots 1 through 9 and 12 through 20 would create two equal rows of houses. A utility easement could be created and exist between the backyards of the two rows of houses. And if the newly-created 20th Avenue ends at the east side of the development, traffic would be reduced on 29th Street. The development of this property is not a good fit for our neighborhood. We enjoyed a wooded, open area and recreation space for decades, albeit owned by the church.
Thank you, Mrs. Unger.
Okay.
Three minutes is up.
Thank you. I only had one more sentence, but that's...
Go ahead and finish.
The current plan does not provide any public recreation area. And do you have any questions?
Thank you. All right.
No.
All right, moving on, Mr. David Wyndham? Mr. Wyndham's walking up. We, I guess we need to put a, a new category on in favor, opposed, or somewhat opposed?
I like to be different.
Right, yeah. We know.
My name's David Wyndham, I have been sworn. My address is 112 29th Street West in Bradenton. I'm born and raised here. I'm, uh, born and raised here, and I have a lot of concern for our area. I've owned a house across the street located at twenty-nine oh six nineteenth Avenue West for thirty-three years, and, uh, as of this year. So, I have a real interest in the community, and as a builder, I want to see things done right, and I know that this is going to be a developed piece of property. We can't get around that, I understand that. And realistically, I think that they've come to the table with a doable site plan on this last plot. However, I do still have the concerns that were just addressed a minute ago with lot eleven and lot, lot ten and eleven. For those two lots, uh, to be available, it causes eight other lots to be much less desirable. So, for the benefit of the two extra lots, eight lots become less practical. The eight lots that we're talking about, which were just mentioned, lots one, two, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, nineteen, and twenty, those eight are the face of this project, being on the corner. And they make it much less appealing when they're on the face as a very small lot. These are not large lots. They are adequate, they do meet the standards, but those eight lots now on the corner being the face, having no backyard, when people don't have a backyard to put things in, what do they do? They put it in the side yard, park it in the side yard, and those kind of things. So, going back to your, uh, suggestion, I think that's a real good idea. Uh, my time is short here, so I'll talk fast. I just think that, uh, there should be some variety of styles and colors and that kind of thing. This parcel is about ten acres, and the sandy, the city's land use rules address really a smaller parcel throughout the community. And I understand, there's a lot of fifty-foot lots in old areas, even in my home area, there's a lot of fifty-foot lots. So, I don't have any objection to that, but when we're seeing these big parcels come across our table, you know, as more our churches are forced to close, unfortunately, we're going to see more and more of this. So, I think there should be maybe some, uh, workshop opportunities for y'all to address these bigger parcels. We got ten acres in the middle of really good quality subdivisions. Why would we put fifty-foot lots in, or even try to put fifty-foot lots in when you're bordered by Casadell Soul on two sides, which is a very high-end quality community? So, overall, I, I just, those are the only considerations I have right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
Um, what about, do you think that, I, I share your concern about the no backyard with those. Could we do a, because, and the big problem, the real problem is the corner one, because they have the two fronts and two sides for setbacks. And, um, it, do you think a variance? I mean, is there a better way to, I mean?
When you have your, your shortest, uh, lots in your face place, you know, that's your sale, it's for the sales tool as well, it's not just for our neighborhood aesthetics in time to come, for the sales of these opportunities for these gentlemen to sell these houses, that's going to be your hood ornament, and that's what people are going to see. So, having your best on those corners, I think, would be a primary thing for it. So, for the loss of two lots, I think you'd really enhance the overall saleability and , uh, quality of the subdivision.
Well, if I could just follow up, as a Realtor, I could, I agree with you, but I don't really feel like, I think that should be the develop, developers should figure that one out. But, uh, I agree from a
You have it in your heart, so.
Well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wyndham, appreciate it. All right, we're still in the public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel have any questions for the staff or applicant further?
Yes.
Mr. Roth, or that's?
Um, to staff, um, so, the, the point being made, because I, I did call out the, the different lot sizes, and the point just being made, uh, to be honest, so what, what exactly is our, uh, requested? I mean, I have a motion to approve, the explanation, I have all these different things. Are we approving the lots? Are we approving, this, this is not a site plan, it's, it's, what is this?
It's a preliminary subdivision plat.
Okay.
Um, meaning that it lays out the lots, the, um, street, the, uh, the basic prelimi, the basic conceptual site plan. You can call it a site plan, but it's more of a conceptual site plan that supports the preliminary plats. So, what you're approving is the preliminary subdivision plat.
Okay, good, so, um,
We're voting to.
The question, so that, that just had been brought up, I mean, the, the thing that I keep getting lost in is I, I have, uh, I know the area well, and for the most part, it's like fifty by seventy-five wide, and now it's going to go rectangular. To me, it's all square footage, it's like, you, you know, I could, I could see why, whether it's fifty by seventy-five wide or fifty by seventy-five deep, it's still the same lot size. So, I'm not, I'm not hung up on that issue. I am, I, I, the, the point has been made about lots ten and eleven of being kind of mucking up the works. Since this project has started, real estate values have just exploded. So, um, I, I'm wondering, you know, is this where we could say, uh, you know, it looks like ten and eleven do kind of muck this up a little bit? Do we have the right to say that? I mean, I, I understand a developer wanting to get as much dollars out of a project as possible, but the real estate market has blown up. I mean, this project is worth twice as much as it was when it started, ten, in, last October.
The, well, the developers come in with something that is compliant one hundred percent to land use regulations. As far as the design, it is up to the developer. I suppose, um, city council could have a conversation with the developer. But, it must be considered that he has come in with something that is compliant.
All right, so, and again, it's, it's private, once we do it, it's a private development, so if it's compliant, then, you know, we can suggest to him, but I don't know if we can mandate to him.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, that, we're being asked.
All right, Mr. Rudesell, is there any legal?
And this is, excuse me, uh, Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is a subdivision plat. Uh, it is generally a ministerial act by the, by the council to determine whether or not it meets the requirements of the land use regulations. So, it's really not a question of where we can, it's not like a planned development where you have give and take. This is really more just checking the boxes.
All right. Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too kind of, I, I concur that, that lots ten and eleven, if I'm being correct here, I've got stuff scattered everywhere. Um, if you could show that again, yes. Ten and eleven are a concern for me, because I, I absolutely agree with what Mr. Wyndham has said, is, you know, that's how people are going to get into the development, and if, if you've got these teeny tiny compared to the rest, smaller lots, um, I think it just, it kind of looks goofy to me. Um, I, I would be more comfortable if ten and eleven were absorbed into the other lots. And I am fully appreciative of what the developer is allowed to do as far as fifty, what, home sites? Fifty-nine? And has reduced it to thirty-three. I've, I fully, fully appreciate that. Trying to put fifty-nine home sites in this area is like, to me, trying to put ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack. So, I would encourage the developer to look at, maybe giving the community a little bit more by, by taking those two lots and having them absorbed both ways. The other thing, I, one of the things that, when we do something like this, I always want to look at the surrounding neighborhood. And I ask our staff to come up with the just market value on the homes that are around this piece of property. And if what I'm seeing is correct, and what we have heard is correct, those homes are going to go for more than the, what the just market value is in that community, so everybody's home should get a little bump because of that, which, if you, if, if your home is your, your major capital investment, being able to sell it for more money than you could originally, I think people like to see that. They may not like the tax increase that can go with your home value going up, but I think considering the alternative, if your home value goes down, it's because something's heading sideways, and we don't want to see that.
Want to give the applicant a chance to maybe respond to some of what questions have come up?
That, I, I, Ms., Ms. Schwartz, I didn't necessarily have a question. I have appreciated all of your assistance with this, trying to get this to a place that I could comprehend it. I, I appreciate being able to meet with you.
Certainly, thank you, and I understand.
Mr. Grimes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd just like to take a little bit to address a couple of the things that were brought up, particularly about those lots, and if you bear in mind, I think I have some, uh, visuals that will help. This idea of doing, uh, you know, the lots between two others is not unheard of in the neighborhood. There are, uh, let's see here, difficult to see on some of these. Uh, it, it's hard to see on your screen, but over here, you know, there, there are areas in this neighborhood that have lots between like that. Um, and when you're looking at the site plan, it can be a little deceiving. Those lots that you're talking about on the top right of your screen are about a hundred and six foot deep. Uh, it allows us to still meet the setback requirements that are in your R one requirements that is at least twenty-one feet, I believe, is the, uh, smallest setback. The requirements are twenty feet, so we are meeting those. And this line of homes on the bottom of the screen are about a hundred and fourteen feet deep, uh, so, you know, we're not looking at a huge difference. It's just a little deceiving where we have some of those larger, longer lots directly adjacent. Uh, but we do meet the, all of the setback and yard requirements for those, uh, particular lots as well.
I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that. I'm just making a request.
I, I, I understand, and, and our client has, uh, prepared these plans and would like to go for it as, as they've been, uh, shown here today.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I don't really have a, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I too am appreciative to your client making the adjustments and, you know, could have been fifty-nine, could have been forty-four, but here we are with thirty-three, and everything checks all the boxes, it's compliant. Everything we do tends to be, oh, well, I met the requirements, or it's compliant. But sometimes we need to also think about what's best. Um, so, I hope your client is willing to maybe take a look at it, because I think we all should play nice.
And, and I can appreciate that and understand, and I have, um, some looking at different lot sizes and different, uh, home sizes in the area, and really, we find this to be consistent. He wants to put, you know, things that are compatible with the neighborhood, and, and that's what we believe we're, we're bringing forward today.
How old are some of the homes around there? Do
Oh, um, it's an older neighborhood, I'm sure there are.
Older neighborhood? Okay, so.
Plats from the fifties and
Right, so, in the fifties, the way things were fine, it fit, but that doesn't mean we have to, to stick to that, you know? I don't know if I'm making a good point to you, but, you know, I, I wouldn't necessarily want everything built now to look like it's in the fifties, but we could seem to do a little less tight.
Any other questions?
I
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I, so, I mean, to be quite honest, this has been, this has been a hornet's nest for the city, you know, and, and it really was compounded by the fact that we didn't have a, a, a planning director, you know, uh, which I know the council tried desperately to get one. So, that being said, you know, there's been speculation and, and hearsay that's gone on and on with this for some time. As, as Ms. Coachman just said, you know, yes, we can, uh, I mean, this is, this is the, this meets the requirements, okay? So, so, and this is, you know, it's a reasonable plan, but considering everything that's been going on in the meanwhile, and, and the concern of the neighborhoods, I mean, I'm trying to figure out of, uh, and, and also, in the world of real estate, I mean, prices are unrealistic at this point in our area. So, this is now turned in from a profitable idea to a bonanza. So, you know, I, I think asking to do the right thing is not an unreasonable request. I, I'm so
I, I understand, and I, not only, but when we're looking at it, our, our lots really do exceed the minimum requirements too. We're not just falling right at the baseline. We have, you know, larger lots, many of them are much larger.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Please state your name, and, and you have been sworn.
I have been sworn. My name is Adam Jacob Sudden. I am the owner and the
Step closer to the microphone.
I am the owner and the developer of the site. Initially, when we had gone, uh, to do this development, we started out with forty-four homes, which was still below the, the actual number that we could have put on there. There was some questions with regards to land use. We justified going back and redeveloping it to only thirty-three homes at that point in time. And the site plan that we have right now, I believe, and again, Councilwoman, I appreciate what you said, it, it doesn't just meet the requirements, it actually exceeds the requirements by twelve percent as far as the life, lot size go at, at this point in time. I was forced to go down from a, an original development that I thought we can do again at forty-four homes. And again, um, talking to you, sir, about, uh, pricing, financing, and all of that stuff, I still had to purchase, and I was happy to do so, the site for the same exact money that I would have paid for forty-four homes as for thirty-three homes. So, the economics of the actual development itself has cost me a little bit of money, if not a lot of money at that point in time. So, again, I respectfully listen to everything that you folks are having to say to be a little bit more giving, and honestly, I really, I feel that we have in the design met the requirements of what the neighborhood looks like. I am not going to be putting two-story homes here on these sites. We're only going to be doing single-story homes. I can do a two-story home if I wish to do so, but I will not be doing that, because again, I want to be compliant within the design of what the existing neighborhood is. So, I, I hear what you're saying, I appreciate everything that you're saying, but again, we're just not compliant, we're actually exceeding what's required by your current land use codes here. Thank you.
Any questions that I can answer for you?
Um, yeah, thank you for coming forward on it. So, since you're here, and, and you've heard my concerns with the green space, um, you know, recognizing that the area, the neighbors used to have green space, and, and now you're going to have sort of, for swift mind purposes, a green space. What you develop, when you develop it, is what's going to be in place. So, are you, can you make a commitment that you keep that open for people to walk around? Because, I mean, if you, if you decide you're going to leave it open, it'll probably remain that way. If you decide you're going to fence it off, it will remain that way.
Ultimately, at the end of the day, the homes will be sold, um, and there will be an association at that point in time. If the homeowners wish to allow, uh, general public access, that will be up to them. It will not be up to me, because I will no longer, uh, own or operate the site. I would have sold all the homes at that point in time.
Well, that will be, there will be HOA when you've developed the last home.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Correct.
So, until then, until then, you will have site ownership.
It's, it's going to be a, a construction site, and I don't think we really want anybody going back and forth on a construction site. Um, there'll be a lot of liability and, you know, potential injuries that would come from somebody.
So, are you reluctant to tell me, to, to promise me that you're not going to make any attempt to, um, uh, keep that open?
Um, during its construction, I cannot.
Okay.
It just makes
Well, you're, you're going to have a temporary, um, construction fence.
The whole site will be under construction, so there'll be site work going on, and then after, there'll be the vertical homes that are actually going to be built. It will be a construction site. It will be more than likely fenced off at that point, so no one can enter, um, homes that are under construction or the site, because there will be a lot of building material and other things.
Right, right, but I'm not, I'm not talking about a, a, a construction fence, I'm talking about like, when you're, when you're leaving, as you're going out the door, uh, you know, are you, are you planning on leaving the site open, or are you going to throw up a
I am planning on not fencing anything after the site has been developed and completed.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yes. Again.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I feel like it's reasonable to expect a private Yeah, I don't know that I feel like it's reasonable to expect a private property owner to be giving access to the public for anything. I just don't think that should be anything we should ever want to require of a private property owner. And that's all I would say.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with you. I mean, once this is owned by individuals, they're not going to want people to just be walking along. I understand you're doing the best you can, that area, and I'm sure the neighbors realize it's going to be developed. But, you know, of course, one cake can eat it too. But it would be great if, I think I heard initially, you said there was going to be recreationals and homes. I mean, did I hear that incorrectly?
Well, there's some recreational requirements to put on the site, and that's what we have.
But not for the rest of the neighbors to eat.
It's part of your land use code.
Gotcha, I know, I know, I know, you checked all the boxes. Great, okay.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jacobson, I heard you mention liability. I would respectfully request that you go buy the property. I think parts of the church have started to disintegrate. And it, it really needs either thrown away, cleaned up, something like that because of, it is private property. People aren't supposed to be on there, but if they trespass and get hurt, it's still a concern.
May I? I don't disagree with you at all. Every Friday, our landscaper is there mowing the lawn. Same gentleman that mowed it for the West Minister Church when they were operational, and since when they closed. Also, about a month ago, when I purchased the property, I contacted the Police Department of the City of Bradenton and entered into a trespass agreement with them. Since then, they have given us probably about a dozen or so signs for no trespassing, which have been posted on the property. Prior to that, the church also, during their downtime, posted their own signs as well. We are doing everything that we can. Honestly, the church has been vandalized. That's why we contacted the city police. Windows have been broken at the church. We've had my maintenance guy go over there and board those up, so they cannot gain access in there. I don't disagree with you. It's going to sit there, and people are, for whatever reason, are not going to respect what they have in front of them and potentially maybe vandalize it. I'm looking to develop the site and to remediate, excuse me, remediate that issue by starting to develop it as soon as I can.
It appeared when I drove by that there were parts of the church that were hanging off of the building and on the ground.
Yeah. But I. We've sent our maintenance people to take care of those items as well, too.
Okay, yesterday, when I drove by, it was still hanging on the ground. So I would respectfully request that.
If there was something specific that we haven't addressed, I'd like to understand what that is, so we can address it.
Well, I wasn't going to get out and walk the site because it's marked private property. However, driving by, you can plainly see that there's, whether it's an awning, whether it was a covered walkway. It's been a long time since I was at that church. My very best friend in elementary school lived right by it, I spent a lot of time there. So, I can't remember exactly, but there is a large, something very large hanging off of the side of the building. I recommend you drive in and check it, sir.
We will.
Thank you.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I just wanted to address, so the comment was made that, you know, it's not in our place to, you know, request, make suggestions or requests to development. We've, I've been doing, I've been doing this for 16 years now, 15 years now, and actually, that's, we do this all the time. It's not, it's not a mandate, you know, that we're putting down there. I mean, look, today, this is, this is step one. This has been around for almost a year now, and this is step one. When we approve this today, it's all over. It's, it's, it's a truck rolling down the highway. So, making a request is not out of, you know, for the better of fitting into the neighborhood. It's not, it's not unreasonable. It's not, and it's not the first time it's ever been done, and it won't be the last. I'm just saying that, you know, it's, it's a request. And, you know, I mean, I'm satisfied with your answer, that you weren't going to gate off the green space when you leave. I mean, because if you did, that's it, it's in there. I mean, I, you, you said it to me, I believe you. So, that's all, it was just a request.
I did not say I was going to gate off the green space.
You said you weren't, you said you weren't, you said you weren't, you said you weren't.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, I, I take you at your word.
Any other questions, or Chair will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Hold on.
I just want to make sure, because I think we were still in council questions. I don't know that we've had staff and applicant rebuttal, if there will be.
Was there any more staff, I think the staff had come up, is there any more?
I don't think there.
No, everything's, I thought we were at, so. All right, Ms. Coker?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve SP 212865.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I will second it for discussion purposes.
Okay, Ms. Barnaby, second it, further discussion?
I do know that, that there are times when you have a developer in front of you, and there, you can do some give and take. I know this is supposed to be a straight, you know, subdivision plat, but this is the foundation that the cake's going to be built on. And I, I I know, Mr. Grimes, you didn't mean to say that this was deceiving, but what you were saying is it's probably not clear, looking at a two-dimensional picture. I would be much happier if we could approve this without lots 10 and 11.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I guess where I, where I'm at is that he's already given a lot. Because originally, he came with, and we didn't see it, but, you know, they could, I just feel like he's already given a lot. And I have, you know, built on these small, on some of those smaller lots. You can do a nice job, you know? I think it's up to them to have a marketable project, and I think that they've already given a lot.
Yes? And no further discussion?
Well, I mean, obviously, yes, I agree with Ms. Barnaby, that it would be ideal to, you know, have it more uniform and, you know, drop 10 and 11. We made the request, it was, you know, not, not agreed to. And I, and I understand going from 44 to 33 is a taking, I mean, it's a, they gave on that. So I'm just trying to figure out how to squeeze, how to, how to fit this into, you know, to an existing neighborhood where it has the least negative impact, or is, or in some way could be a benefit. That's why I've been so focused on the green space. That, you know, the biggest concern is this area, this neighborhood had green space, it's been taken, it's being taken away. It's not, it's private property. When it was church property, it was private property. That's why I went back to 1957 and '25, when this was, this was obviously plotted land before our time. The year I was born, this was plotted land. So, you know, it's just going to its original, staying in its original state. Fighting over two homes, I mean, I'd prefer they weren't there. You know, I don't think it's unreasonable that they are there. But I'm, I'm more concerned with the green space staying public as it, as it has been, just for the best interest of the neighborhood and everyone trying to be a good neighbor. It's just, I, I feel comfortable. I, I wish it was better, I wish I could, you know, had been more, this has been going through the Planning Commission. You know, like I said, I'm going to say it again, we didn't have a planning director. You know, it's been, it's been much, which has led to anxiety and speculation in the, in the community, you know? Because we just didn't have a clear message going out. You know, even, even our planner, you know, Marshall isn't even here today. So it's just kind of one of those situations, where we're doing the best we can. But I'm not, I'm not jumping up and down, saying, oh, boy, this is my favorite day, so.
I agree with you, Mr. Roth, we didn't have a planning director, but we have Myra. Marshall was there through it all, and they got accused of doing some things that were just absolutely false because of the false narrative, when it wasn't something going on. Our staff presents the information that we have on record. And so, you know, from this standpoint, thank you for doing that. And then Robin came in and confirmed all of what they did was, was correct, and it went forward, so.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing.
And I'm not saying you, I'm just saying the chair.
I'm not criticizing current, current staff is doing the best they can, they inherited a hot potato.
Yeah, no doubt.
You know, the people that were here, I mean, even Marshall was doing the best he could, but he's not, but he wasn't a director.
Correct, correct.
You know, we did not have a plan.
But we still were operating with great people in the seats, it just wasn't, didn't have that leadership. Ms. Coker?
And one thing, I know you were looking for positives, this is going to help the property values of everything surrounding, because these are going to be nice. I'm assuming they're going to be nice.
I think the least of our concerns right now are property values.
All right, hearing, no more discussion, we'll start the vote, and Ward to approve SP 212865, and Ward three?
Yeah, I don't feel that I have the right to refuse, actually, so.
So it's a yes, Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
I concur with Mr. Roth, I feel like we don't really have a leg to stand on to, so I vote yes.
Okay, carries unanimously approved. Thank you, we're going to, it's 10:31, let's take about a nine-minute break and come back at 10:40. Thank you. Mr. Perry? Welcome, staff.
I'll just give it a minute for Counselor to settle in, and Counselor Roth to get back, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
May please the counsel. Folks, I just want to say thanks to you all for the last seven and eight weeks. It's a kind of unique situation to be up here today, doing a budget that quickly, coming into a new position. And I think that all of you have helped me look at where we've been, where we are, and maybe where we want to go. And the staff that we have has been terrific, across the department heads, the divisional managers, Finance, Linda, everyone down here has done a really, really good job. And we've put hours into this, to the way it was done before, to what we're trying to do now, and do it a little bit different, a little bit more, I don't know, informative, hopefully, I think is what you'll see. I have a fairly brief slide deck, I think there's probably 10, 10 slides on this deck that's going to be going over our budget submission. Of course, the budget submission that you received on Friday was in Uni's format. And that's a lot of numbers and computer runs and categories and things like that within our budget system. But I'm trying to put it in plain English and talk a little bit about the philosophy and the numbers behind this year's budget. A budget is a statement of policy. It's probably more of a statement of policy than anything else that, that a government and a Board of Governance and Administration executive side do. So the first slide I have is the fiscal year 2021, 2022, where we're going. And I start with this little picture downstairs that looks at, on the lower left-hand corner, the vision, the goals, the plans, leading to action, leading to success. And the first thing I want to start with is visioning. And there's two types of visioning that I think I'm going to have to embark upon with your all's help, with the staff. And that is the internal visioning for the city and the external visioning, the visioning for the city. The internal deals more with the alignment of what we have, as far as the different departments and how they work together. You have folks that deal with numbers, you have folks that deal with technology, you have folks that deal with people, you have folks that deal with plans, you have folks that deal with buildings and higher features and infrastructure and the like. And of course, I'll talk about safety partners, which are key. That's the, that's the underpinning of a city government, a local government. And how it fits together supports itself, supports the outside community as well, is the important thing. And so we're going to continue to do visioning about, you know, what it is we should do and why we should do it. Some of the slides coming up, I'm giving you a precursor to explaining what's coming up. And then, of course, the external visioning. And that is a lot to do about a whole host of things. You know, we talked about the reserves we have, we talked about what we've been able to do with some of the major capital projects that are, that are out in our community, that are part of the brilliance and the beauty of this city. Capital expenditure specifically, public safety, buying apparatus for the fire department, police cars, they're in our budget. You'll see them coming up as I move forward. But it all starts with visioning. Because if we can't do the visioning, then we're kind of, don't know where the goalposts are. Probably not a good analogy to use for my Florida State fans. But nonetheless, where the target is. And what I mean by that is that we want to look at our road and water projects. We have flooding in the areas that we know about, we have stormwater issues. We have a whole host of road repaving, of sidewalks, of all this, these things that you all come in and have to vote on every couple of weeks and try to answer to the constituents in the community. And it's important how it fits together, the bricks and mortar. A lot of them are catalytic, the Riverwalk, you call that catalytic. Old Main Street, catalytic. Spring Hill Suites and, you know, what's happened down there, catalytic. Far west side of Bradenton, catalytic, far east, catalytic. What we have to do on, in District Five for underserved areas has to be catalytic. We want it to be better tomorrow than it is today. And then, of course, we have equipment we have to buy, and digital transformation. If we don't start to understand, and I was born back when Counselor Roth was born, close to those dates, we were talking about that plat was done. And I'm not the most digital person in the world, computer savvy and the like. But I know one thing, in being involved in government, that the digital transformation that's taken place from when I was in high school and used to feed cards into a computer reader for computers, to what's there now, into where we're going, it's just incredibly fast-moving technology, innovation, smart cities, things like that. And we've done a good job with a lot of that, but we have to continue to basically push that. We want to be known in this area, not behind Manatee County, not behind Sarasota, not behind other places, but being a leader in those things like digital transformation. And so, again, visioning. How do we do it? We formulate a strategic and tactical plan with execution milestones. And I think that's what I'm going to be trying to work on this next year. What is the plan? What is the plan for the internal that I talked about? Tell me what the plan should be for the external. And I can start moving us towards those, those objectives with plans that have execution milestones. It starts with proper organizational alignment, and we have to have the administration and the clerk and the finance, human resource, information technology, I'm going to be getting into that just in a second. And again, next year, focusing on metrics, measurements, trying to take a look at the policies and procedures we have that can help us formulate a better government. As we move to the next slide, we're going to talk about money now. We just talked about the general concept. Now, the revenue that's come in, it's been a good year for the City of Bradenton. It's been a good year for the state of Florida, it's probably been a good year for the United States in financial circles, absent the spending. But here, this pie chart shows what the 2021 adopted budget of $48,578 was, and what the 2022 proposed budget is. And the budget revenues have to meet expenditures. That's the way fund accounting works and the totality of financial statements and the like. And so, what this represents is a $4.366 million increase in revenues coming to the City of Bradenton in the general fund. The total number is $52,945. Again, 48,578 plus the 4366 leaves us with 52,946. Moving on to the next slide, what I pointed out is trying to show the major source of revenues to the city. And that is the ad valorem taxes representing 47% of the, of the sources to the city, or $24.987 million. Other big numbers there are going to be the half-cent state revenue share for roughly 9%, a little bit more than that, $4.8 million. State revenue sharing, 2.5. Utility tax, and then the franchise fees. Um, state revenue sharing, two point five, utility tax, and then the franchise fees, of course, and ultimately all others. All others is a category that's in your, um, budget book that shows all of our revenue sources. Some of them we did better this year than last year, some of them we did worse last year. And at the end of the day, it was a plus-up, basically. We did better across the board as an aggregate number. Moving on to the next slide, the increase by major sources of revenue. And so the ad valorem tax is up one point three eight million dollars. Pretty sizable. We had just talked about real estate property values going up. Um, one of the good things in Florida is it's a, it moves fast in Florida, what I've seen compared to other states. It goes up fast, but it can go down fast, too. It works both ways. Um, plus Florida reassesses basically every year, and so this number could go down. Some of the other jurisdictions I've worked in are very slow to reassess in downward economies. And, and for whatever reason, people are okay with that, and, and I don't think they would be okay here. They expect the, the ad valorem to reflect the property value.
Right.
And, and, and that makes sense. Uh, moving across the pie chart, the state revenue sharing is, is six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars more. That represents sixteen percent as the source of revenue, and so on and so forth. The half-cent state revenue sharing, that's an important number because that looks at overall macro spending in the community. Out of the sales tax that we receive, I'm sorry, the one percent, um, it, that represents a people spending more, a people spending less in the community. And do we get more or less, uh, uh, revenue source from that number? And that looks like a pretty good number, um, as it relates to the increase of one point two two three million. And of course, the other three components that I discussed. Moving on to the next, um, chart, I want to show the proposed organizational chart. And in this chart, you can see that the mayor and the city council, as the, the governance of the city, are up top. The city administrator's office comes through as, as the chief administrator officer, basically. The side, uh, wings of that are the public information officer, and of course, the support of Ms. Melton as this acting city clerk that's done a great job. And even moving further to that is an executive assistant. Some of the folks had said, we need someone to basically support the, the efforts of answering the phones, doing some of the administrative stuff. That executive position, assistant position, which will be shown in the next chart, is someone that can serve both the city administrator, support the city clerk, the policy planning, and procedures administrator. That Cory is kind of, uh, Ms. Fortin has assumed those duties in addition to being my executive assistant right now and trying to get me to learn a little bit about the city and get things scheduled for me, and a whole host of other support roles that she does, working with different policies and, uh, projects that are online. Um, I'd like to transition Cory more into dealing with our policy planning procedures, uh, type of work. Below that, an assistant city administrator. And you'll see in my next chart that that's basically the former city clerk and the treasurer position. Uh, there was Mr. Callahan and, and Ms. Beauchamp, and, and that was a one-two kind of team, I think, that ran the city's administration side. And I'm just putting a different label on it, for lack of a better term. If you look across the bottom, our departments are broken out. Police Department, Fire Department, Planning Community Development, uh, Public Works and Utilities, Finance Department. What I am going to be proposing is a better delineation of finance. Right now, we have the accounting department and, and finance manager that, that Mr. Kelly has been doing. We need to beef up accounting. That'll be in the next slide. I'll talk more in depth. We need to have some Office of Management Budget, a budget analyst type of position, I believe. And then risk real property, um, that will obviously handle the, the risk management in this city. Uh, the connection with the real property that's owned by the city, uh, administration, maintenance of that. And then we also talked about grants. I'm going to be getting to that. To the right of that is a break-off, a break-off, break-off of Administrative Services Department. A new proposed department that will oversee what administrative services are. I've worked in two models. I've worked in the model where it's DFAS, Department of Finance and Administrative Services. And they have a combination of the two under one department head. I've worked in organizations where they had a finance department, uh, Department of Finance and a Department of Administrative Services. You, you can argue which one is better, and I think it really depends on the entity and, and, and the programs and delivery of services. But I like breaking that off to have a, it, administrative head of, of the Administrative Services Department to basically bring together information technology, human resources, utility billing. We plan on bringing over purchasing and procurement. That's currently at the Public Works Department. There was, I believe, six or five positions associated with that. But that was all done out of your Public Works Department. Um, I think we need to bring that over to Administrative Services Administration because I don't think that contracts like that, the leasing agreements for management services for, for the parking garage should take six weeks. And, and since it was approved, I brought someone up to my office and said, do you want people to know your name? Let's get this done. And it's still not done. That's unacceptable. It is absolutely unacceptable. No, no, uh, any kind of disparagement. The people are working hard down there. We have, uh, a, a new person coming in who's really good. But I think having it closer to my shop will help us all. And, and I, and I think it being placed in Public Works doesn't pay it the due respect it deserves as an important function of being able to be nimble and, and, and act quickly and efficiently. So I want to bring him over the purchasing and procurement department. I'm also looking at a family and community services coordinator to do outreach, to take a look in those communities, um, particularly underserved communities and see what is it we have out there? How does it fit in with our other, other components of the city, whether it's Public Works or, or HR or CRA? And how do we service that community, outreach-ing to try to provide them and incorporate them into the city? Their needs, their, their, their skills, their culture, uh, their uniqueness and, and everything. And I think that position's important to make an investment into that. Moving on to the next slide. This, this highlights what I've been talking about. On the left-hand side, you'll say, you'll see the assistant city administrator position. At its proposed salary right now, it's, it's a thirteen, about a fourteen thousand dollar savings overall. Um, that particular position, I got, I have to get the right person. He or she needs to be right for the city. They need to be right for the administration, right for council. And, and I don't know when I can get that person. I'm, I'm not going to just hire a person to come up, uh, along just to, to fill, um, a vacancy. And I don't know, quite frankly, how I'm going to find that person yet. You could say, well, you could do a search and things like that, which may be. I'd, I'd rather do it right than fast. And so that's an annualized salary. It could be six months from now. I mean, I have to, I, I have to feel good that I have a, 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 a good enough, strong enough understanding of the city and how we're working together internally to get the right candidate. Next, you'll see the new general fund city administration requested. These are positions, basically, that I'm recommending. And that is that executive assistant I talked about to, to serve both myself as the city administrator, an assistant city administrator, the policy practice, um, office and procedures, as well as the city clerk, and answer the phones, to get Kelly off the phones in the afternoon and, and other things. So it's kind of a, what would you call it? A utility player, so to speak, could serve a lot of roles, for lack of a better term. Finance Director, I think we need to look at our finance department. You'll see that on this slide, uh, on, on that column, as well as the one to the right of it. And to the right of it, I'll go there, a senior accountant. We have four people in our accounting department. And I don't want to use names, but I kind of have to, to the extent of you have Mr. Kelly and Linda. And, and they're doing the heavier accounting for the city. Most people know that. And we have a couple of accounting folks that are good, that are moving up. We just bought a temp in to help a little bit. But we have to beef up the accounting department. It's just way too light, in my opinion. And frankly, if something happened to one of these people, those lights might not go on. Uh, it's, it's a pretty rough situation, and I like, I like resiliency, I like succession, and, and, and I like cross-training and the like. And that's what we're going to move to in that department. It's not easy to find senior accountants that typically either have good government accounting background through experience or their degree and have worked in government accounting, or they're CPA'd or whatever. Those folks are actually fairly hard to find. And Mr. Kelly's been working at that, and, and I've been working at it with him, and we're going to continue to do that. But we, we're going to have to beef up a couple of fairly skilled levels. And the Office of Management and Budget that I had recommended on that left side, under Accounting Analyst OMB, Linda has been doing that, in addition to the other twelve thousand things that, that happen, that, that Ms. Linda does. And, and I got to tell you, I mean, there's, there's one employee that I've worked closely with that I, I really wouldn't want her job, and I'm very appreciative if she's the one doing it. It's her, so I want to say thank you. Yeah. And I know everyone else feels that way throughout, at least our administration and, and most of the council that I've talked to. So you'll see these positions, basically, on the new general fund city administrator requested positions. Um, the Administrative Services Director I talked about. Moving to the far right of this graph, that's six hundred and forty-eight thousand for non-bargaining increase plus bargaining contract increases. Um, that represents, so to speak, what I was kind of told, not told, but, but informed, uh, was probably a good, good number to put into our budget for salary increases for employees. It's been pretty rough. We had COVID, a lot of other things, and I think that's a fairly modest number. I've worked in, for entities that went years without a salary increase in austere times. And then when things got better, they gave maybe four percent plus two percent in a one-time payment, not in base. There's a lot of different ways you can do it. This is an in-base three percent modest increase that I think we can afford. And then moving to the left, sandwich in there, new general fund department requested positions. These come from the department. Through budget hearing process, we met with the mayor. I talked with some of you about these positions and, and the like, but they come from the department, with the department saying, and I didn't okay everything. There were some that we just had to basically say, can you wait a year? Can, can, can we do it a different way? But a hu- a human resource generalist. Um, our HR department does a lot. They do a lot with very few people. In essence, there's two people there. Laurie's just went over to fill in for Jen, who left to go back to Clearwater. So you have a, you have a city with roughly six hundred authorized positions with an HR department that has three people, two that actually do substantive HR. Uh, that's probably a little bit light. I, I think we could do more. I think we can do better. Um, there's a lot of training I want to do. I, I've noticed that things like, you know, Title VII, civil rights training, things like that, risk management training, a whole host of other things that could be done through the HR department, need to be, take priority to make sure that we're skilling up our employees, at least to the basics of working in government and what the rules are in regards to that. Next position's an IT project manager. Um, Chris can talk more about that when he comes up. Again, a department position, needs to support our IT functions. Facility maintenance workers, uh, through, through Jim and Public Works, two electricians. Uh, landscape ground maintenance workers, two of those. The grants administrator position is an asterisk next to it. Some of that can be funded, half of it can be funded. We're proposing by ARPER funding, and the position below it, a senior accountant to work on the accounting. And this is the Ernst &amp; Young stuff. I imagine they're going to come in and say, you need to set up some systems to account for this funding that goes out, and the like. The grants administration position, we talked about OPM, other people's money. Uh, state money from Florida, uh, the state of Florida, federal money perhaps, in federal grants that are gained. There's two types of people in the grant world. One is the grant administrator. The other one is the grant getter. The administrator sets up the program and says, this program meets these grant specifications of what you have to do in order to qualify for the grant. They also set up the accounting systems that, that say, we're authorized, the HR systems, that we're authorized to hire three people on this grant and this accounting that'll bring about compliance. That's the grant administrator. The grant getter is another individual that's entirely separate and never shall the two ships meet in the night. That individual, she can go to, to Tallahassee or knows where funding is for the Department of Environmental Protection Grants and a whole host of other things. We just basically kind of took someone from, from Tampa, uh, Regional Planning Council, who's pretty familiar with the grant world, and we introduced him to Bradenton. He came down, talked with Jim, and they have just recently applied for two additional grants. Jim had applied for one. It was denied. They beefed it up a little bit. And that individual is fairly good with understanding it. That's the grant getter, so to speak. And so that position is in contract services. That'll be coming up on a slide, um, a little bit later. And that's a, that's not a reoccurring cost or, or an FTE. That's basically hiring on a contract for professional services, somebody that, in essence, will eat what they kill. If they bring grants in, they get compensated that way. If they don't bring grants in, they don't get compensated. To the business world, that's called a fixed cost versus, versus a non-fixed cost. It's a non-fixed cost for us, basically. And so we don't want to buy a bunch of oil equipment to drill wells if the price is going up and down. We're better off renting those from the service provider. It's the same thing. We don't want to basically put somebody on the payroll if we can basically use a contract to try to see what their performance level is. And so I'm innovative in that regard. Moving forward, the total number here, an increase in personnel costs, is one point six seven three million. And that, again, is, is against the backdrop of the four point three three that comes in. I want to move to the next slide, which talks about the ARPER money that we, we discussed a little bit earlier, and expenditures thus far. Um, we want to put in that hundred and fifty thousand for Ernst &amp; Young over the life of the, of the ward, not this fiscal year. Where the seventy-five thousand dollar contract that was just approved deals with the setup of the program. The senior accountant I discussed on the term basis, that's half the salary and benefits package at forty thousand. The grants administrator, partially, um, paid for by ARPER, who will be handling some of the ARPER funds. And then the community services coordinator, again, ARPER-related term position, and an IT project manager because it all has to be intricate, integrated on platforms so that we have the proper things in place. Next slide is going to be, and I'll be wrapping this up fairly quickly, moving a little faster now, expenditure increase in the general fund, non-personnel. This is non-personnel operating expenses. As you can see, if you look at those contract services in the middle, the legislative lobbyist is included in there. Again, a position that basically is professional services related to the performance and delivery of the service. Um, the planning, we looked at, I, I talked with Robin, and she wanted to do a review of the form-based code that we've have in place and how that's working, whether we have to tweak it and the like. So those are all one-time expenses that, that could have reoccurring impact. But they're contemplated as an, a, 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 an annualized basis. And the human resources, legal fees, we're looking at the possibility of, of having to pay the legal, well, we, not the possibility, we have to pay legal fees um, for human services, um, the, the police, police technology, that's a pretty good number, two hundred thousand, that has to be increased for the PD. They can talk about that, or Mr. Baldwin can talk about it. The legal city attorney search, twenty-eight thousand. Um, I talked with a couple of people. Um, we use contract services, of course, and, and Scott does a great job. And a lot of what I look at, the, the template of, of what Scott does is across the board. Um, a lot of transactional work, too, when we have big land-type transactions and the like. There are a lot of things, like approving procurement contracts for the lease of that space, like dealing with HR issues, when we have an HR issue come up and someone did something that maybe they shouldn't have done, like contracts that Mr. Baldwin might have for technology, that we have to have a function internally that is probably cheaper to do that work internally and continue with Mr. Rudecel as it relates to kind of dibbing up the labor. When you have to send that over to Mr. Rudecel, and he does a good job quickly getting back with me for, for the projects I've had thus far, um, I think we need that internal function inside. And the problem with legal assistance is that, uh, the city attorneys is that you're talking about sixteen, twenty different areas of substantive law. There aren't many people that have that experience. They have to understand environmental law as it relates to the water, you know, the, the SWIFT permits that we have, um, for storm, storm, stormwater. They have to understand HR. They have to understand real property. They have to understand police municipal defense. They have to understand risk management. They have to understand IT. You really, it's hard to find somebody because usually people that work in, in, in city legal departments, they work in one section. They work in the employment law section, or they work in the police municipal defense section, or they work in the transaction section and the like. And so it, they are difficult to find. I'd like to embark upon finding some. I'd like to embark upon finding somebody at a reasonable price that could support the middle and lower functions of what we're doing. We're still going to have specialized needs, particularly in transactional work, particularly in things like Fair Labor Standards Practice Act that we do now. We have, we use contract lawyers that are different for F L S A, particularly for areas that are real specialized, our bond councils, things like that, financial advisors. There's still going to be contract costs associated with legal. There always will be. When I ran an $8 million legal department, there was. And there's cases that Scott might have that are, there are conflicts of different, there might be multiple people involved and he can't represent more than one. There's a whole host of things, the way that comes up. But that's in there and I wanted to, I wanted to broach the subject with you in my budget presentation because I think it's important to talk about. The other things, pretty much down the line, road things, you know, city clerk lays a fish, you know, rates that we have to pay to record and collect, record and account for official records and things like that. So bottom line is, there's a number there that's fairly sizable. I don't think I had an aggregate. I want to say it's about 1.4 million on that number. It is. I think it's about 1.43. Moving on, next slide, Existing Half-Cent Infrastructure Projects. This is what we have on the board that we're working on. Riverwalk, obviously a large one at 2.4 million. Jim can talk a lot about these types of projects as it relates to city improvements, streetscape, transportation improvements, stormwater sidewalks. I know that's near and dear and we've been doing a good job with that, trying to bring them into the neighborhoods and spruce up our livability and the like. Next slide, General Fund Capital Projects. The Fire Station 3 completion at 791,000 to basically be completed this year. I think we're looking at a completion thereabouts of about December or January. Jim and I had a conversation about it yesterday. Depending on supply chain issues and weather and other contingencies, we're looking again at probably January, late December, January. Just wrapping things up, last two slides, General Fund Capital Expenditures, Vehicles, Public Works, Police Department. This is, this is light equipment that the police department's buying and Public Works is buying. I think there's 14 vehicle replacements that the chief can talk about. It's important to have a vehicle and equipment replacement program that is continuously properly funded. It costs less money in the end, obviously, network switching equipment for IT, miscellaneous equipment and the like. If we can move to the last slide. This is important, basically, if you look at FY '22, the middle column coming down, it has the aggregate number, the total new revenue number of 52,945. How much is spent in each particular category as compared to FY '21? The operating number, the capital, and then the inter-fund transfer and a contingency. And we put the money in contingency, basically, because it's a COVID year, there's a lot of things that could happen. And this is, this is a basically projected budget number. It's usually typical that things will occur through the year that council decides that they want to take up as a priority and expend money on, that the administration may take to them and say, I recommend or we need to spend money on this. And so that's the fund that we use as a contingency. With that, I want to know if it's the call of the council to have presentations by the departments, and I have major departments. I told them each about four minutes. They're ready to go. I think they'll move through it fairly quickly or, and then I can stand for questions?
Yeah, I think that would be-
I don't want to lose the room. I mean, I understand it's heavy stuff.
What I'd like to do, toe with the council and talking to all of you over the time and listening is, maybe when we get all of the information, I know everybody's writing down questions, maybe ask each council person to ask one or two questions, move to the next council person to go around. Everybody will get to ask their questions, but maybe it can, and some of your questions might be answered by other council people, but to share the time with everybody, so.
Singer's going to start with planning, if that's okay?
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Good morning. Robin Singer, Planning and Community Development Director. Let me see, do we just pull open the other slide? It's on the right. Okay, I see it. Okay. Going through, basically, our objectives for the year. We're primarily focused on customer service and that means customer service training for our employees, but then also improving access to documents and also improving our processes to make them a little more accessible to everybody and particularly the development community. Also talking about public education in various forms and improving on staff training and credentials in all areas. Just looking at the, what we have going on in terms of wages and benefits and operating, for the most part, we're coming out of the General Fund. However, we have funding for both C D B G and SHIP funding and mainly C D B G covers some personnel costs for both code enforcement and our housing coordinator. The Building Permit Fund actually covers most of the operating costs for the building division, and I'll get into that in a little more detail. One of the things we want to do is implement a new electronic permitting process that is called Acela. It's similar to what the county has done. We save a little bit money by doing that because we can probably implement the same program that the county already has. And then the development community, the contractors are already going to be familiar with that program. It's going to make things a little bit easier all around. We also think we're going to probably save money by the fact that we're not going to transfer data that we already have in the Tyler munis system. And we're just going to leave it there because we're already, we're still going to keep that system for financial purposes. And then Acela also works with our financial program, so we aren't going to be able to, we aren't going to have to implement a new financial system as a result of putting that in. Now, I put in $200,000. I don't know that it's going to cost that. That is really, I think, the top end of what it may cost. That would include modules for both the Building Department and the Planning Department. We may implement something for code enforcement, but that might not be necessary because they're operating well with the system that they already have. We also want to provide for virtual inspections for certain types of permits, and I'll get into that in a minute. But we don't anticipate, we discussed that with IT, we discussed it with some companies. We were concerned about data storage for those virtual inspections because we have to save that data. But we think we can use the existing systems and the existing database and we're not going to have a fiscal impact for that. And then also, we're talking about inspections and possibly an inter-local agreement with the county. We've been trying to use private services, but there's a lot of competition for that work. You know, those private services may also do private provider work on inspections and permit review. And so we think there'd be less conflict with the county and may have no fiscal impact because they'd be using our services just as much as we'd be using theirs. And that's basically when we have an absence in an area that doesn't have redundancy. So for example, we have one person that does commercial electric inspections and so if that person is out, we're in a little bit of a pickle. And sometimes trying to get the private entities to help us out there has been challenging, so. And just to let you know where the money is coming from, while this is a General Fund Department, it gets paid for out of that department, the building permit fees that we collect per state statutes have to be used solely for carrying out the local government's responsibilities enforcing the Florida Building Code. So I can't use them necessarily for planning or code enforcement, except where code enforcement dovetails with certain building code requirements. But for the most part, it has to be spent on those fees. So we have an overage of about 1.8 million for the Building Permit Fund. And so the money that we would spend on the electronic permitting would come out of that fund. So we're still waiting on an estimate for that electronic permitting, but we feel that we have it covered. And you'll notice that we're netting in the positive over a number of years. I haven't got the numbers for this fiscal year, but we were a little under for 2019 to 2020. But I expect that's going to pick up just based on the amount of permitting that we're doing. And just to give you an idea of the number of permits. Now, we don't list all of the permits here because there's a lot of different types, but the total of all permits on that right-hand column gives you an idea of what we're doing on an annual basis. And again, I expect that's going to be picking up this year. And then with an asterisk, I've marked those permits that'll be eligible for that virtual inspection. So what the virtual inspection does is if you have an AC changeout on your house, the state allows us now to inspect that virtually, which means that your contractor can take a picture of it and send it to us and you don't have to wait around for the inspector to show up, particularly if it's an interior thing, if you change out your water heater. That's probably going to be one of those that you'll be able to do virtually in the future and you won't have to wait around your house for an inspector to come. So we think that's, that's going to be a benefit to the community as a whole. And the Planning Department, a number of different things we're trying to do. I want to get everything onto municode that we can get on municode because I think it makes it more accessible for everybody, for architects and developers and property homeowners. So the first thing we want to try to do is a comprehensive plan, put that out on municode. A lot of communities have done that. It makes it a lot easier to read. And if we want to make changes to the comp plan, it's certainly helpful if everybody can go onto municode, read what it says currently and decide whether or not they want to make changes. So we have two comp plan amendments that are coming to you at your next meeting. And once those are completed, then we'll probably come back to you with an amended and restated comp plan because if we send it, we save some money if we send it to municode as one ordinance as opposed to them having to go back and put together all the ordinances created the comp plan that we have today. So we're going to, so we're still obtaining an estimate on that. We sent, the clerk's office sent that up. I'm not sure which budget is going to come out of. It's going to be us or the clerk, but we'll let you know about that. And if there, if there's a necessity for a budget amendment, we may have to come back to you for that. Also, it's been 10 years since we implemented the Form-Based Code. The Form-Based Code is, basically, it's your zoning code, like any other zoning code, that tells you where buildings can be and what uses you can have. Our Form-Based Code covers the downtown area and includes within it a lot of incentives. So incentives for density and housing, and that was to sort of promote redevelopment in the downtown area. And so we think after 10 years of implementing, it's time, you know, because we hear good and bad about it. And so after 10 years of doing that, we'd like to have the same consultants come out, which is Dover Coal. And we had a continuing contractual agreement with them that you recently re-upped so that we can take advantage of that. And they gave us an estimate of about 56,000. There's a little cushion in there because we, after completing a re-up or a report card on that, we may ask for some recommended changes and we may also ask to codify that also within the code. Again, I'd like to make everything available. Right now, if somebody calls about something in, within the area of the Form-Based Code, I have to send them the whole Form-Based Code. So, so doing this, we'll put it on municode and just make it a little easier. Let's see, Land Use Regulation Update, we had a consultant that prepared that about a year ago. We're going to be marching through that with the Planning Commission this next year. We also put in 5,000 for scanning documents to make those more accessible. And then also, there's 30,000 in the budget for the completion of the Micro Mobility Study. And I believe that they're going to be having another meeting shortly to finish that up. This gives you an idea of P C D, planning applications and zoning permits. There has been a steady kind of falloff on what we're seeing and I think some of that is, you know, by right zoning is accomplishing what it's supposed to accomplish in terms of administrative review and making things a little simpler. Code Enforcement Division, we don't really see any fiscal impact. I've asked Volker Rees if he anticipates needing additional officers. He does not. He does want to update the minimum maintenance standards over the coming year and we are going to be implementing a program of proactive enforcement, which we're already starting, but we want an educational component to that, too. If there is a salary study, we'd like to participate in that, make sure our officers are paid so that we retain the officers that we have. And just to give you briefly, we have four officers. This is the city in total. The easternmost and westernmost are covered by one officer. And in the central portion, we have three officers. And those pastel-covered areas with the numbers on it, those are our C D B G census tracts. So anything, we have to account for any work we're doing in C D B G because code enforcement is in part funded by C D B G monies. You also see the C R A areas there and we'll be working with the C R A on specific tasks in that area. And so this just gives you the funding sources for how our code enforcement is currently paid for. And the bulk of it comes out of the General Fund, but we do have money coming from C D B G and C R A. And this just, you get the monthly reports from Volker Rees on how we're processing petitions. And then finally, we have the Housing Division. And in conversations with the city administrator, we may be looking at that getting absorbed into your Grants Administration process if that's what you decide to do. But we will continue to work from a planning standpoint with the Housing Committee on strategies to promote infill housing, incentives for redevelopment and assessing the existing affordable housing. And you've already seen C D B G allocations for this coming fiscal year and SHIP allocations for the coming fiscal year. So no changes there and those are things you've already approved.
Thank you.
Larry? Singer, Singer.
Welcome. All right. Good deal. All right, good morning. We're going to go through this pretty quick. First slide is our introduction with our mission statement. Our total, total budget for this year is far left. It's the $9,942 and with comparison of our previous years, they're to the side along with our total expenditures. Below that, we have our operational expense. And keep in mind, this is non-personnel. Our personnel portion will be showing a little while later. We divide this down into about four different areas, contractual being up about 4,000, about $5,000. It's, what's covered in that is services that are renewed every year for us, preventive maintenance, physicals, one of the things that fluctuates from year to year depending on the age of employees. One of our new programs that we're installing is Genave System for station alerting, kind of get away from those bells and whistles and sounds that we, you know, scare you to death in the middle of the night. This is a low volume, the lights come up, it's heart-friendly. You've got lights in the ceiling tiles, blue for metal coil, red for fire. And it's a pre-recorded tone, so it saves us on time, gets our guys out to the truck a little quicker. Our supplies and equipment is up around 18 grand and mainly for that, for us, that's out of our 511 account. That's basically replacement tools and items less than $2,500. This goes along with like batteries for radios and things like that. Our maintenance and repair, we've talked about that quite a bit before. This is issue that we've had with our older fleet. We've kind of remedied that with our, the purchase of those new vehicles. Only problem with that is that that's something that is going to take a little while for them to deliver. We're looking at our first engine probably around February, probably seven months, eight months after that will be our second one. So we'll fight through this. Right now, we're sending our equipment to 10-8 and dealing with air rates. I think we've got a better solution right now with going over to North River. Vehicle repairs, utility and fuel is a fix for us. It's slightly down. So our total operating is 792,000, up approximately 51,000, and that's about 7%. Our capital expenses, you can see that in the left column is what we're requesting. It's kind of a visual for you at the bottom, kind of see what we've done the previous years. The bottom right corner is the items that we have. The security gate is one of the things, Station 3, I'm sorry. Very good. Yeah, bottom right corner, you'll see a security gate. Problems we've been having at Station 1 is vehicles getting broken into. The backlot is fenced off. This will kind of secure that at night. We're getting away from our hydraulic stuff and going with battery, so that's a replacement, the ventilation fans replacement. Our radios are year three of a phase-in. We've split those up to three years to kind of ease the pain. This will be the final year for that. The Genave System is our station alerting. We've got extractors and the second part to our SCBA's. So that's a total of $111,000, up by about $4,000. This kind of gives you an idea of our replacement schedule, our roll in stock. You see that we, you just agreed to, or just agreed to the fiscal year '21 for the two pumpers, nothing in '22. We're going to have to start kind of looking at our aerial in year '23. It'll be not the big AP, but this will be a ladder drop. To the right there, you see our station openings. Rob kind of talked about that a little bit. Station 3, I see that happening. It's, they're telling us this is going to be done by the end of the year. I kind of don't see it. I believe it'll be more like '22, first is '22. Our station number two, we're still looking for property for that. We found a few places in working with Foley Bryant to make sure that it works out for us, but hopefully we can get something squared away in 2022. Our personnel, you can see that's, is decreased a little bit. We get those numbers from accounting, and they're contract-driven. So that's basically the end of our budget. The final two slides I've got in there just for informational only. You see our response times and what we try to meet at 90%. Green downtown, and it kind of gets red to the outskirts, east and west. Part of moving that Station 2 out, we'll fix that on the east side. The rest is our call types and kind of what we've been running. You guys, again, you can look at that later. I don't want to take up too much time. Breakdown of our community risk reduction, training hydrants. We touched 2,044 hydrants. We hit every one of these and flow test them and do maintenance on them. Other than that, I think that wraps up fire.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Police?
Okay, that's right. Okay. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
One of the biggest divisions of the city, but I'm going to try to adhere to his less than five minutes, so I'm going to whip through this, and if you have questions at the end, please feel free to ask. Okay. Fairly straightforward. What you see this year is a little over $20 million budget, about 3.22% up from last year, which is mainly due to salaries, salary increases, he just talked to you a little bit about a cost of living as well. We're about 14.5% of the overall city budget, which, if you know anything about city budgets as you do, that's far under what you would normally see throughout the Land for City Budget, so I like to think that we're pretty lean. So Chief, what else, other than the salaries equates for the rise in your budget? I'll tell you, things are getting a little bit more expensive. That's also impacting the rest of the nation. Ammo, right? We have a pretty significant ammunition budget because we train, we practice. Ammunition's up. Guns are costing more. I think it's kind of odd, too, that our vests that we wear, the body armor, has also increased as well very significantly over the past three years, and these are things that we really just can't say, hey, I'm going to get, you know, three less cartons of budget or of ammo. We got to kind of keep with our assortment, our allotment, and in fact, we're training even more this year. And so as you see with the next slide, 14% of our budget is for operating and capital, and a majority of this, almost exclusively, is vehicles. I'm going to talk about vehicles in a couple slides, as well as salaries. We, I know people are a little surprised to hear, because you hear me usually talk about my staffing being somewhere between 170 and 180. We struggle a little bit filling our civilian positions, but I'm almost just five shy of having 200 people authorized for the police department. We're doing our best right now to fill those positions. The breakdown summary, I thought you might find this interesting just to kind of see where our money goes into what areas, and this also gives you an idea of the cost centers associated with the PD. When I came in five years ago, we had one cost center. It wasn't really a real productive or easy way of directing and holding people accountable to their expenditures, so we broke it out into these areas, and I will tell you that all the managers associated with these particular areas have a good understanding of what their budget is and what they can spend it on, so that works well for us. I talked to you a little bit about the police vehicle expenditure. We've created a 10-year plan, although I will tell you, next year, we'll be talking more about it because our 10-year plan doesn't really mesh well with what the city's 10-year vehicle plan thinks it should be. They actually think we should be trading in a little bit earlier than what we do because we get a better resale value, and so it becomes a cost benefit for us to do that. Currently, our average year for our cars is five years, but we have cars over 10 years old with well over 100,000 miles. We're doing our best to try to resolve that, but we're probably going to have to bump that up in the next couple of years. I mentioned to you about our authorized sworn strength, and knock on wood, right? I didn't do that loud enough. I took two days off for my birthday, and we're down two officers, so I'm not at that magic 123 right now. I'm at 121 as of this week. That actually kind of gives you an idea, too. People find it interesting to see where our distribution is, how many people we have in patrol, how many people on the various shifts, detectives, whatnot, and I think you'll find that interesting if you take a few minutes to take a look at that. Same with civilian personnel. We do a good job with our part-time staff, and when I talk about part-time, this is everything from crossing guards to the front desk officers to the folks who greet you at the front of City Hall. We do a great job recruiting those, a little bit more difficult with the crossing guards because generally speaking, the median age there, I think, is about 75, and so we keep them for a year and they move on to retirement.
Permanently.
Third retirement, right? I'm always proud to talk a little bit about this. We ask for a lot of money, but we also do a pretty good job of bringing money in when it comes to aggressively pursuing grants. Last year, over $500,000, and these are all grants that we had to apply for, fight for, go after, look for, so we do pretty well there. Off-duty, we actually have somebody who, one of our civilian positions, she does that 50% of her time, but that brings in about $85,000 to the city, and that's an offset, of course, because a lot of times they're using our vehicles and gas and whatnot. And then as well, second dollar funding, and the second dollar funding helps pay for training for my officers. My training budget is probably a little lower than most because our second dollar funding is a little higher than most, and so we use that for advanced training for some of the officers. This year, this coming year, I'm going to be looking at leadership training for a lot of my lower-level supervisors as well as mid-level. That's going to be our focus internally for this coming year. I'm going to let Chris Ball talk a little bit about technology. I just want to say that it is expensive, and it's only getting more expensive. As things advance and change for us, we're just seeing a higher price tag when it comes to everything we do technology-wise. And I go back to, when I became a police officer, I got in a car and I had a radio. I didn't even have a mounted radio. I had to use my portable radio and put it into a mount, and then that became my radio. Now you get into one of our cars if you ever walk by and see it. It's pretty amazing, right? I still don't even know that I know how to use everything in the cars that my folks are driving. And then finally, I talked a little bit about this already, the capital vehicle plan. That's going to be something that we're going to be working with Mr. Perry over the next year, just to make sure that we're doing it economically-wise. Not that we were trying to grab for more cars, but we're doing it in the best interest of the city. We're going to have to look over the next year, not this year's budget, but we're doing a lot of work towards that end at a new CAD RMS system, looking towards the cloud like most other agencies are doing. And then radios, we actually just replaced a lot of our radios. It was the best we could get at the time, but unfortunately, we're just seeing some drawbacks and some problems with them, so it's something that we're going to have to address very quickly in the near future. And with that...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're going to be Public Works next? Well, I appreciate everybody's patience and indulgence.
We didn't get a Public Works handout, did we? I didn't get one. No.
She's bringing it now. She's bringing it. Thank you. Thank you.
Happy to present our information related to our budget for the coming year. The first slide basically shows a synopsis of the last three years of our budgets, including the proposed one for '21, '22. If you look here on this slide, it would show that we're asking for about a 0.7% rate budget increase. Unfortunately, that's a little bit misleading because, as Mr. Perry talked about, purchasing has been pulled from our budget, and we're happy to have it go where it needs to be. We also typically, we fund utility billing, but we're not responsible for the operation of that budget. So if I take those items out, again, we do fund utility billing through our 402 Enterprise Fund, which is our water and sewer fees. So if we do that, we come out to a more accurate reflection of what our budget is over the last three years because I've taken out utility billing and purchasing from the prior years, and that indicates that we're looking at about a $2.24 million increase in the budget, 6.8% overall. What does that include? These are the major items that are included in that increase. We have about $196,000 is related to wage increases at the 3% rate. We have $200,000 for the design of a new annex building, if you will. Basically, we have the property across the street from the existing annex. We're looking to build a new facility on it, so we're funding that out of our enterprise funds. Also included in our increase is $184,000, thanks to FPL's rate increase that they passed along to us. Now, that has a side benefit to Mr. Perry's budget because it increases his franchise fees. We also have in our budget $370,000, a little more than that in additional paving materials. That's kind of a misnomer. Basically, between half-cent sales tax and what we do in paving, we average out about a million and a half a year. Last year, there was half a million in our budget and a million dollars in the half-cent sales tax. We're flipping it back this year, so that increase in paving material shows up in our budget. We have $132,000 roughly to replace an old failing building in the backyard of our annex area that needs to go. We also have $110,000 increase in our disposal fees for materials going to the landfill. That's not a rate increase from the county for the disposal. That's we have more people, we have more garbage, it has to be disposed of. We also have about a $344,000 increase in our administrative charges that our various enterprise funds send back to the general fund to help offset our costs for HR, IT, accounting, all of that. All of that helps keep tax rates down as well. We have $146,000 increase in property values and insurance. Risk management has done a great job of going through all of our facilities and determining what we actually need for coverage for all of the buildings that we have. We own the majority of the buildings, so we're carrying that cost. And then lastly, we have a little over quarter of a million dollars related to five new positions. Mr. Perry mentioned them. We have one new facilities maintenance person, two new electrical maintenance people, as well as two landscaping grounds folks that we are hoping will be designated as our downtown cleanup squad, polishing squad, if you will. All of that totals about 1.9 out of the $2.2 million increase that we're looking to have. Again, looking at it over the last four years, this is just a depiction of those operating budgets. That works out, on average, to be about a 3.5% annual increase in that budget. The next slide is where all of those monies go. So we got about 46% of our operating budget is tied to our water and sewer funds. The next largest is the combination of the three subentities that make up solid waste. They're about $8.6 million, representing about 23% combined of the 16, 5, and 4 that are on that right side of the pie chart. The next one is, the next largest one is our general funds, which is fleet, streets, landscaping grounds, that don't have an enterprise fund that fund them. Those come from the general fund. And lastly is, 4% of the overall budget is River Run Golf Course. The next slide shows how that is broken down. Unlike some of the other divisions or other departments, we have about 43% of our cost is associated with salaries. It's kind of skewed because we're responsible for a lot more than, a lot of infrastructure that's associated with it. So we have landfill costs represent about 6% of our overall budget. Chemical costs to treat both the drinking water and the wastewater represents about 8% of our budget. We have about 7% of our budget, $2.4 million in capital expenditures for vehicles and Again, the general breakdown there, but the, again, the thing I'd like you to take away is, is from a labor standpoint, we're about half the percentage of all the other departments in terms of the overall amount that it represents for us. In addition to our operating budget, we also designate money out of our enterprise funds to go back to capital projects. So from our 402 Water and Sewer Fund, we transfer $4 million a year back into capital projects. And this is the breakdown of the projects that we're proposing for the next year. We're looking at about $1.7 million for water main replacements. So you're aware thus far, we've replaced about 37% of cast iron pipes in the city with about 10 miles or so of pipe that's been replaced over the years. We also have $800,000 for sewer lining. This is one of our focuses moving forward. When it rains a long time, groundwater table comes up, more water goes to our treatment plant. We want to prevent that from happening. Best solution, rather than digging up all the sewers and replacing them, is we camera inspect them, determine if they're structurally able to be lined, we line them. So now we're looking to, in the past, we've put about half of that amount into sewer linings in a year. We're looking to keep that going for the next few years. In addition to the 408, we also transfer money out of our stormwater funds into projects, and here we have three main projects that we're looking at from the stormwater side of things. We have the Village of the Arts drainage project. We've recently completed, in this year, the design of that. Next year, we'll be moving into the first year of a two-year construction project associated with diverting some of the flow away from the village from Wears Creek and sending it to the Manatee River. We also have about $100,000 in lining of corrugated metal pipes. We have a lot of corrugated metal pipes in the city. We have a lot of corrugated metal pipes in the city, and unfortunately, with the brackish water that can back up into them, the pipes don't last. And again, we try to find out if we can determine the structural integrity is there for us to line it to extend its life. And then we have another quarter of a million in overall CMP pipe replacement. I think, I think that's it.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity to speak to you a little bit about the IT operations and budget for this year. My name is Chris Bald. I lead the IT operations. I'd like to just quickly acknowledge Mike Taraciano back there. He's your number two, does a really great job for us, and I'm, I'm happy you could be here with us this morning. So without further ado.
Can you figure that out?
Yeah, I can, it's, it was, it was in my first class I took 45 years ago, so. Okay, well, Mr. Perry said that he's not very tech savvy. I disagree with that. I think what Mr. Perry understands very clearly is that the value of technology, and it's not always seen in dollars and cents in a budget, and that's why he's asked me to speak to you all today, and I appreciate the support that he's giving us. And, and I think a big part of this is, is alignment. He mentioned this earlier, is we want to make sure that the strategies that we're putting in place align with your vision for the city, and I'm going to talk about that in just a second. But first and foremost, I want to give you something as an idea of what we feel our mission is and what we're here to do. So you probably know this, but we support the public safety operations, which makes all of our jobs 24 hours a day. And I think that's important because when you look up and down the west coast of Florida, it's not always the case. Typically, a lot of agencies have their own, but we have partnerships with these departments in order to keep our costs down and to provide a high quality of services we possibly can. So I just want to talk real briefly about our mission so you understand where this money is going. And basically, what, what we're trying to accomplish every day is to maintain our citizen and stakeholder trust. It's very, very important in everything we do, all the scrutiny that we get, and it's very easy to look at things and say, you know, it's behind the scenes, you know, who cares? Well, I feel like you're always doing the right thing when nobody's looking, you're, you're doing the right thing. So we're, we're wholly committed to continuous improvement, progressive innovation, and cyber threat mitigation. I know you guys hear me talk about cyber threats all the time, probably don't like to hear it so much, but it's a reality for today, and it does influence our spending habits. You know, we have to put things in place in order to protect the very critical infrastructure. So if you ask me what my job really is, protect the data. That's what I'm supposed to do. That's what we all do. And then the next thing we have to do is we have to make it available all the time. So that's the second chore. But to do so, we advocate very, very strongly for strategic partnerships, whether it's with our internal departments and divisions or external sources like other communities, other counties. We're always looking to see how we can partner better. Oops-a-daisy. Goodness gracious. Go back one here. Okay. So just to give you a little bit of insight, we, we do a little bit more than just fix computers when they break, right? So there's a tier of things, we could get into it, but essentially, I've broken out some things I think are critical to understand beyond the help desk support, beyond the PC support. There's a lot of planning, a lot of preparation that goes into what we do. Roughly 75% of our time is, is spent planning for the future, believe it or not, and trying to ensure that, again, the systems availability is there when, when everyone needs it. And lastly, of course, we have a good degree of infrastructure and personnel management. You've got to know people as much as you know computers these days. Okay, just to get into some of the financial side of things, just giving you a picture here to suggest that we're in roughly about a 4% increase on average year over year. But to be honest, that can vary because sometimes things are taken as capital expenses when they make financial sense, and sometimes they're operational expense. A license for a piece of software is a great example. Do you, do you spend the money upfront, or do you finance it over five years? It's, it, so they could go to one, one budget line or another. But what I do want to show you is that even with the increase in the, the new position that we're asking for, which is a project manager, which I'll get in just a second, we're staying right at a 10-head count, and that's held true for a while now. And in our, our theory always is, you know, we, we don't want to always just throw people at problems. I mean, that's not the right way to handle it. So we reapportion work, we're always looking at where the future work is coming, and what we've seen is projects, projects, projects. So, you know, during COVID, I think we all were just happy to keep the lights on, keep everybody working. Now that we're seeing, you know, okay, life goes on beyond COVID, we have to make sure, you've heard a lot of these folks talking about all these great projects and things they want to do. I think every one of them involves technology. So we're seeking to add that position so that we can manage it more effectively, do documentation, do all those things that make a, a project come out successfully, more than just throwing a technologist at it and saying, hey, we got it working, you know, how will we support it for the future? How do we document it? All that stuff will be very, very critical and, and further increase the professionalism of our department. That's why we're asking for it. Let's see here, and you'll see here, we, we're estimating about 55 active projects this year. So just to talk about some that are more maybe in-house that we're dealing with as opposed to a public safety project or what have you, is under the innovation line, you, you folks heard about a fiber ring, the virtual fiber ring we want to put in between us and the, the public works annex. It'll, it'll also service the possible future location of public works plus Fire One. That's, we're hoping to, to send that live during this budget year, and I think that's going to really help us on, on some fixed costs that we have. It's going to change things from variable costs to a fixed cost because our internet providers and our circuit providers are always asking for, for more money. We want more speed, they want more money, same as you get at home. And it's not just about technology, so we're always looking to see how we can reduce costs. We are, we're due for a copier replacement, and we're speaking with some vendors now, and what we've asked is brand new equipment at lesser price. I mean, that, that sounds antithetical, but if you don't ask, you don't get. So we're seeking to get a, a significant increase that I can share once we get a little bit more mature with that process, but, but definitely worth looking at. Strategic partnerships, want to, want to thank the fire department. They, they've helped us in terms of giving us some space within their new building in Fire Three where we can locate some disaster recovery equipment, and I think that's really critical. Again, where we're not building new things, we're just taking advantage of existing structures that the, the citizens have already paid for. And lastly, disaster preparedness. So we have a disaster-ready preparedness roundtable coming up in January. The reason why I mention this is, this is our opportunity to sit down with all the departments, all the divisions, and say, let's pretend there's no computers. How do we work? How do we keep things going? And then we work backwards from there in order to make sure the system support whatever their needs are. But if we don't ask, we, we don't know, and this is our opportunity. So I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't also explain that there are some challenges that we face in 2022 that are not reflected in the budget. The first is, we have a semiconductor and microchip shortage. I'm sure you're all reading about this in the papers. We're starting to see some real extended lead times, and another concern is, those that have the equipment in stock are now going to want a lot more for it. So the budget that we put together, it typically started sometime in February of this year, so we do our best to try to, you know, adjust for those costs, but we haven't asked for significant increases. Next, we have controlling inflationary costs, which kind of stands to reason. Also, we have a tight technology labor market right now. It's getting harder and harder to find good people. You've heard this message throughout everything. Well, technology is one of them because, again, everybody is, is really seeking to, to increase their technology projects this year. Also, want to talk briefly about cyber terrorism. We can thank Bitcoin for that. The ability to have basically untraceable money has created people that would love nothing more than to, you know, abuse the systems that we're trying to protect here. And last, and I want to bring Mr. Perry back up again, is we, we have to stay current with this digital cities idea, and to break that down to maybe something that makes more sense to you guys is, I feel like we're doing a really good job supporting the folks in this room, the folks in these buildings, and taking care of them, but you're getting input from your constituents, and a digital city is listening to those things as well. So we need to be just as addressable and accountable to those individuals as we are to the ones in here. So I'll be seeking input from you folks to make sure that, you know, we're building things that support those needs. So with that, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry. Mayor, I just want to say thanks to our division managers that are in the room, too, that for sake of brevity, I, I asked them to kind of pair out their presentation from HR and Lance and other folks that are here, they're doing a really good job, and our fiscal managers from the departments and the like. So with that, and, and also Finance and Tom, it's done a, a great job, and I, I talked a lot about Finance, so I didn't want to get too much into the weeds with that. I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Specifics?
Why don't, why don't we just go one to five and just?
All right. Let's go, Kirk. Do you have any specific question out of the box?
I guess I had one question that came up. When you were talking about searching for legal.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have, do you have any idea what kind of salary range you're going to be looking for, or?
I guess it depends more on, on the types of candidates we can attract. If you're finding someone that may have been a city attorney in a medium-sized or smaller medium-sized city that has those 16, 20 years of substantive legal practice, practice experience, that person's going to be a little bit more expensive than someone that maybe came from a smaller city, that's a little bit younger, that type of thing. Range probably 100 to 140, 150. Ballpark number.
Yeah, and so you're, you're thinking that it makes sense to not just stay with a contractor? It just seems with, with a firm, you have some access to so many different lawyers that have different expertise, like you talked about. And if you go and just hire a lawyer, you're, you know, you have one that understands real estate, understands all the different things that you talked about. I, I kind of like the idea of contracting it out, so I'd kind of like to hear why you feel like we should change.
I think there is a good body of work that a local government and municipality has to do that can be done internally. There are specialty areas that I think lend themselves to those higher levels of expertise, but there's an efficiency, too, that Chris can't, if he has a contract dispute, I mean, he can reach out to Scott, but we pay for that, for the contract services, and, and our contractors usually have a full plate of other things they do, too. And so there's a level of, there's a lot of things, quite honestly, I'd like to have legally checked, but I don't because I'm a lawyer and, and.
Yeah.
But, but it's been a long time since I practiced law, and specifically Florida law. I'm not a member of the bar anymore. There wasn't once a time when I cooked the Florida bar and I practiced law, not in local government, but I practiced law. And so I'll look it over, and I'll just for purposes of expediting things, efficiencies, decision-making and the like, I'll make the decision. Would I like to walk down the hall and say, hey, can you take a quick look at this? Yeah, okay, I'll be back to you after lunch.
Great.
I'll see you after lunch. Yeah, I like working that way. And, and when I'm asked by counsel, hey, did anybody check this out? Yeah, they did. And, and it's just with contract lawyers, it's hard to do that, not because they're not good and they're not responsive or anything else, it's just a little bit, little bit more lengthy.
And do you feel like we need to use a headhunter for that, or just couldn't we put out an RFQ?
No, I would absolutely recommend a search for that type of person. An RFQ, I just don't think it goes broadly enough, and headhunters can kind of sometimes find folks that they know about that are out there, you know, across a broader spectrum, so to speak. Particularly where you're talking about state law, you know, someone that understands, you know, licensed to practice in Florida specifically, with local government experience? I don't know. Those folks, you know, when I was young, I, the reason why I'm a lawyer was because my mom worked as a waitress after my dad died and my grandmother raised me, and we basically would wake up in the morning and we'd watch reruns of Perry Mason and everything. But I never, and so I said, I always wanted to be a lawyer, and I did. It's kind of crazy. Most people didn't know what they want to do, right? But I never said, geez, I want to be a local government lawyer. You know, no one, I don't know if Mr. Russell did that. I know he does a lot more than that, too. But most people don't typically do that. Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only had two things that came up when, when we were going through the presentations. One has to do with planning. I think we seriously need to look at our sign ordinance and do an update on that because that's going to be a problem in the future because it already is. And number two, and Mr. Mayor, I think this is something that we probably need to put on a workshop, but the ability to allow people to call into a meeting, I think that's a policy decision that this council needs to discuss, the, the ins and outs, and if we were to do it, how we would do it, and I, I know that that's going to have IT's participation with. So that's the two things that I, when I looked at, at the presentations today, those were the two things that I came up with. And I also, I, I want every staff person to know how much I appreciated this, the presentations, the work that went into them. I hope that we can somehow put this on our website, if we could, so that the, the citizens could be directed to it and they could look at the snapshots of what we have. And again, I don't know because of the ADA issues if that's possible right now, but I'd, I'd like to see it dispersed far and wide.
Appreciate the comments and the thoughts, and we'll look at both the sign ordinance and, and the call-in to meetings and the, the website as well. And I'd just like to also point out that someone else does great work in the city that I was remiss in not recognizing, which is Katerina, who's in the back with CRA, that has worked really closely with me and is critically important to the success of this city and does a great job, I think, in everything. And although it's an independent quasi kind of administrative function, it, it's helped me a lot. She's helped me a lot. I want to express my appreciation for it and the importance of it.
Thank you. Mr. Roth.
Yeah, so first off, I just wanted a couple of statements. One, I was happy to see PD, you know, that you turned your budget increase, it was a 3.22, from, because it recognizes last year, we put 6.32 in there. It was like one of the biggest years we got in, so thank you for, for holding tight this year. Public Works, I'm, I'm happy to see that duties are being shifted over to like purchasing, you know, because I, I'd like to see you guys be freed up to do public works because that's, that's, that's a big, it's a big job. And, and I, I thought maybe mission creep happened over the years where more was put on your plate so we can get back, get, get you guys back to the basic premise of what you're supposed to be doing. I didn't see your, the sidewalk increase of 600, well, 750, went from six, 75 to 750, so that's a 6.675,000 dollar increase. I didn't see that in there. Also, lift stations, you, we, 750,000, I think we're pretty close to getting caught up with those, or is it never-ending story? And thirdly, you said the Voda drainage was going to happen next year. Does that mean 22?
Let me work backwards.
Yeah.
The Voda, again, would be, the construction would start this fall.
Okay.
So it'd be in the 21, 22 budget. There'll be a second phase of it that would be in the following year because it's spread out because it's cooperatively funded by SWF MUD.
Great. Now, that, that's, that's fantastic because it, so they've been waiting, well, there's been complaining about drainage in there for a long time, so getting started on it is the beginning.
As far as lift station goes, it's not so much that it's a never-ending cycle, but it's also a cycle of the technology is changing. So we're upgrading the control systems at all of their various lift stations. We're also doing, one of the projects would be to upgrade away from, there's still four lift stations out of the 62 that we have that are what are called wet well, dry well setups. They were, they were all built in the same period of time, about 1950-something.
So we got four more to?
We have four more of those that we're trying to upgrade.
That was my question.
And bring up to snuff. And the first one was?
Sidewalk, the 675 increase.
That, that money is within the 302 funds, not within the, the operating budget of, of Public Works. So Mr. Perry had a slide up that showed there was a wedge of 750,000 for sidewalks. That's 750 for a capital project to replace existing sidewalks. In addition to that, within our operating budget, we still have 75,000 for concrete that we've been carrying on a regular basis. So technically speaking, we might actually altogether have over 800,000 in sidewalk replacement money associated with it.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
And Mr. Perry, Counselor, Jim, is the school safety money on that sidewalk grant that you guys got?
Well, there's, there's, there's a current project that we have money that, again, is 100% funded through FDOT, which is the sidewalks-to-school project that will be starting up here. We have to use a DOT-certified inspector. They pay for it, but we have to use it. Well, the contract that they originally had set up to use that expired, so they had to go through the whole process. So the whole thing goes. So the whole thing got delayed, and now we get to start the construction project now that school's started. But anyways, that's, that's about a $375,000 project. In addition to that, in the coming year, we have a second project that we've received funding for, which would be for Manatee Elementary School sidewalks. And then two years after that, we have an additional grant, again, from FDOT to pay for sidewalks associated with Prine Elementary.
Okay, great, thank you. And then lastly, it was, it's not really a question, it's for planning. Thanks, Jim. So you said that, you said that code enforcement thought that they didn't need another, another agent, so, but I was looking at the chart here of what we did, 17, 18, 19, 20. The graph is going up, and just as a general observation of the state of the city, we probably need to rethink another code enforcement agent, especially, one of the things I've been talking to Mr. Perry about with trying to get ahead of trash, is that we have a lot of people illegally dumping in the city, that we, someone's got to, someone's got to stop that. I mean, that's just putting more work on Jim's plate, and it's costing us millions.
Yeah.
And, you know, an agent is pretty cheap compared to, you know, what we're, what we're going through right now, trying to find a driver and a truck and all that stuff. If we could stop the illegal dumping, we could save millions.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Sanders?
I agree with that. Jim, just one quick question, so while it's on my mind, lift stations, you said there were still four that you felt it was, needed to be completed. You applied for some grants and we haven't heard anything. I know that's been quite some time ago, is there any expectation that we'll get that this year or next?
We're going to continue to apply. We, we didn't, we weren't successful with the most recent round. And the, the folks that Mr. Perry hooked us up with through the Regional Planning Commission, Council, have some ideas associated with how we could apply for some of those grants and improve our, our capabilities, so we're going to continue to apply. One of those is, is elimination of a lift station, not rehab of it. It would.
Yeah.
It would literally get rid of the one that's in front of your house.
Right in my house, that's it.
You didn't have to say that, but that's all right.
But it, it really is, I mean, anybody driving around and coming upon that would go, what the heck was somebody thinking back in the day to, to put that there? I, I mean, I understand water flow downhill towards the river, but still, putting it on a.
Not that water.
Land as white as this is a little crazy.
All right, thank you. Mr. Perry, just a few questions, I'd like to meet with you some other time to go over some details, so it's the way I ask to hear all my questions, but I noticed in this compared to last year's, we didn't have a pie chart that identified each of the departments, like police, fire, public works. Give me a, a figure or a, your estimated pie chart of how the city spends its money, like 36, 35 million, public works, blah, blah, blah.
I can get you those numbers, I don't want to really take a guess at them right now.
Well, they're, they're, they're identified in, in each one of the presentations. For example, police is 20.3, fire is almost 10 million.
Right.
And public works is 36 million. What's the total?
Well, the general fund total is, is the 52, basically. And some of that public works comes from capital funds as well, and that's why it exceeds the 52.
So that gets up to, I didn't see the total. I don't have it with me, but the total is 120?
Yeah, the total overall budget, it's actually with the ARPA money this year, I think closer to 140.
140, now that takes out the 10 million dollars out of reserve, I didn't see that in here, the 10 million from reserves, the 10 million from ARPA. So that makes it 140. 120, then those two 10 million dollar transactions.
Yeah, that's, I think, I believe that's correct, if you look at those reserve amounts.
Okay. I didn't see any increases in any of the department, departments for more employees with exception administration. And that has a little bit of a concern to me, you know, like code enforcement, I think, needs another one, or planning. I think, you know, maybe other areas, we've, we've, and just looking at your presentation, we had about a million dollar increase in administrations versus 600,000 in other employees. Would that, is that right?
I'm going to pull up a slide to try.
Yeah, it's on your slide, which.
Ask that question.
Here it is, yeah, yeah. You had the slide, which one it was?
I think it's the one that's before you on the monitor now.
Yeah.
That basically shows, if you look at that, those two middle slides, the one.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, for the 512.
Right. So you've got a little over a million, and, and those are basically administrations.
Well, not really. I mean, the one on the right is strictly for departments. The human resource generalist is an HR department, the IT project manager is from the IT department, the facility maintenance worker, the two.
I used the wrong word.
Yes, sir.
These are, are City Hall employees, with departments and administration, but, but basically, we're not hiring any employees, these are, the 600,000 is just salary increases.
No, those are new employees, basically, under the, under the.
It says 3% non-bargaining increases.
Oh, that, that, that 648 is a 3% across the board salary increase for all non-collective bargaining employees, they're, the collective bargaining employees under their own contracts. Yes, sir.
It, it's just my comment is that, yeah, we're increasing administration, not administration under you, but administration in City Hall services through each department and not increasing workers.
Well, I would, I would beg to differ that the landscape and grounds maintenance workers are, are workers, that the electricians are workers, that the facilities maintenance is a worker, that the IT project manager, I mean, those are basically, you know, in, in department, people that, that don't do, they might do a little bit of management work, but, but they're delivering services, basically. If you want to kind of delineate and, and demarcate a line, you know, of what's an administrative position and what's a, what's a, I don't want to call it a white collar, a blue collar position, but, but a more direct delivery of service position, we could do that, and, and I think you'd see the distinction. A senior accountant to me is probably no different than, quite frankly, a solid waste driver. They basically have a job to do, they don't get involved in administration or management, they're crunching numbers, and that's what they do. The solid waste driver, he picks up solid waste and does other important things. But there are, there definitely, if you see that my column, you'll see some of them are, you know, there's about two or three. Yeah, you know, there's, there's, there's a finance director, an ASD director, and.
So you're asking for assistant city administrator at, I assume, I didn't see this exact salary, probably 125?
It's about 130, yes, sir, around there, yes, sir.
So you say that's actually a, a net loss, but isn't that a little bit not true, because you're taking the city clerk's position and eliminating that effectively, but you still, we still required to have a clerk by our, our charter, so now we've, we still have a salary for that, that you would have to combine with that to, to make that really a, a good number. Because it is increasing, it, it shows a net 13,000, 14,000 decrease.
Right.
But you're not taking everything into consideration.
Well, I am trying to take most things into consideration, and, and when we talked about having a clerk, remember Ms. Melton was there as the assistant clerk.
Right.
Now Ms. Melton doesn't have an assistant clerk. Salary of the clerk's gone down, the treasurer, I mean, I don't know how many.
Treasurer's eliminated.
Treasurer's eliminated, right. Clerk is required by charter as well. So the net financial impact, and I think I feel pretty comfortable saying it, is a minus 13,000 at that calculated salary.
Okay. In the budget you presented here, you, we, we had a previous vote on Ernst &amp; Young at 75,000, and I saw 150,000 budgeted.
Yes, sir. When I went over that, I explained that the first part, which is the contract that was, that was awarded today, approved today, deals with Ernst &amp; Young coming in for a series of six meetings and setting up what our basic qualifications are, that what we would qualify for, how we would set up the systems and the like. Going forward, the proposal that Ernst &amp; Young sent us, and, and it has not been approved, the other 75,000 dollars, but it is in a budget item that would come before council, is basically to set up our, our folks to be able to do the administration and compliance function that's related to the, the, the overall grant. We had had a discussion before about, well, how much does this cost over the lifetime for 2026, if you, if you costed it out for four years? And I would try to keep the administrative costs well within a 15% cap. That's generally what administrative costs are on grant, administration and compliance and fiscal agents and everything that comes into play with that. It, out of that 10 million dollars, I, I think you can probably expect over the four year period to probably spend, quite frankly, you know, roughly somewhere between 8 and 15% on administration. I'd like to keep it at the lower end. And the more I can build up the infrastructure in place to do it internally, the less I got to use the Ernst &amp; Youngs of the world. But they do provide technical assistance, and it's an ever-changing, effervescent environment with the, the people that make the rules and change, modify the grants and things like that.
So in the contract we just signed, do you have to bring us back before council to go beyond the 75?
Yes, yes, I would.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's a budget, I mean, I would absolutely have to come back before council.
Okay. Why is the fire and, and police vehicles out of the general fund versus their own budget?
Well, they are, they are on their own budgets, it's just their budget within the general fund. We pay as you go, basically, in the city. And so in paying as you go, we try to, you know, maintain our reserves that have been prudently and judiciously and wisely developed, and we pay for what we can out of the general fund. And so those capital pieces are paid for.
Well, these were maintenance items, but wouldn't it, shouldn't that be in their, in their direct budgets versus a general fund budget?
I think they, well, the, the general fund budget includes the department budgets. I think you have to understand that the general fund includes, you know, all general operating cost of the city, and departments fall within the general fund. Now, those departments will also have special funds like capital funds. Jim's budget has a lot of different capital funds, and the city has capital funds. Prior administration was holding a lot of capital in the administrators' fund. I don't, I like keeping it, as a practical matter, in a capital reserve, so that you can specify that, we can talk more about that issue, but, but the general fund is within, that, that funding for the vehicles is within those departments in most cases. I think the fire trucks we actually purchased were in a capital, capital fund.
Capital funds?
Yeah.
So are we getting a true picture of what each department is, if we're?
Yeah. I, I, I think we are getting a true picture of, of what each department is, but when you say a true picture, and that's a really good and fair question. I'm not used to buying capital, heavy capital expenditures are, out of the pay-as-you-go general fund. I'm used to basically a capital fund that would do that or, or the like. We kind of do that because we are pay-as-you-go, and, and if we have a little extra money, as you looked at, we, we.
As you mentioned, fire, the 10 million dollar budget does not include the million and a half for the two fire trucks.
Right, but it does have other capital in it.
Well, I understand, but you, you, you're actually not getting, you know, to the general public, you're not getting a true picture of what we're spending in that particular department.
For that service, that's a fair statement.
That's a fair statement, okay.
There is additional needs that are outside.
I get it, I got that.
At department's budget, within the general fund.
Right, exactly. And I saw in the police budget, 20 police car, or.
14?
14 police cars. That would average about $47,000 apiece.
Roughly.
Roughly.
But those are captured in my 10 million dollar budget.
Those are captured?
Yeah.
All right, because, why is it captured versus a fire truck?
It has more to do with fund accounting and the way our funds have been set up. That's a good question, too.
I was just going to say, though, that is an operating expense that happens every year. The fire trucks are one-time offs if you try to do, without a five-year plan, and I think that's where, if we come up with that five-year plan, then it can be included. If we know every year, we want to spend a million dollars for a new fire truck, then it would be in the operating budget instead of the capital budget, which is pay as we go, one-off, where every year, we need 14 police cars. But every year, we don't need a million dollar fire truck, maybe right now we do, but as we go in the next several years, we're not going to need it.
Right, it's an extraordinary capital expenditure, and I think it was explained.
I understand all that, thank you. I understand all that. That, that police car purchase at $47,000 apiece, is, is that, is, is there, is that a good purchase? That seems like it's kind of pricey, but I know there's a lot of equipment on them.
Yeah, I, I'd probably defer to Chief on that, but that's the going rate that I've seen.
Well, the, the reason I ask that is because I see we're driving Dodge Chargers now, which is, I'd love to have one.
I don't think you'd want to jump on a Dodge Charger if you're going to get your tactical gear out and things like that.
Maybe not, but, but it sounds like the Dodge Charger would be less comfortable for an officer versus.
And it is, and the reason we went with, not this coming year, or yeah, this past year with Dodge Chargers, we had, looked at all SUVs, is because I, police officers come in all shapes and sizes, and some of the SUVs were proving to be a little bit too big for some of my smaller folks, they just didn't feel comfortable operating them. And so we, we downsized, and then I want to make sure you all know, when I say we're buying a car for $50,000, it's not just the car, it's the outfit. The outfit that goes into a police car can be significant, lights and siren and technology. Also part of our outfit that we've started in the past few years, and you heard me mention this, I think a few council sessions ago, is I want a defibrillator, I can't even say it, you know what I'm saying?
Fibular.
Yeah, and each of the cars is part of the outfit. These, these cars should be arriving at our station ready to save, officers save lives, they should have a shield on them, they should have, you know, all the safety equipment that you can possibly imagine. And so when you look at the price tag, that can be a little, you know, different than what the actual sticker price of that car is.
I, I understand, I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that it is, it's a pricey car, and, and that's fine.
Generally speaking, just for your clarification, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but we purchase the vehicles on a contract, and then we usually send them out with modifications. Sometimes they require alternated modifications and, and other types of things. Of course, the cages for transport that are in the back, the MDTs, all the emergency equipment, the electronics that goes with that, the stuff that you put in the trunk, the gun box, everything in there, and it, it probably does cost about 15,000, rough number on top of the cost of the vehicle itself. So that's kind of where you get to 45.
And, and this is important, and this was brought up to me by the last administrators, why, why don't all your cars look alike? And I said, because I, I go for the, the model that's the most inexpensive at the time, that can still fit our needs. We went away from the Ford, when they went to the all EcoBoost, they said, we're not going to make police interceptors anymore. Well, then we, you know, we went to a whole different line. Well, then Ford realized, uh-oh, we just lost a lot of business, and so now they've introduced them back. And so we're not even sure what we're going to next year, because we're looking at what they all have to offer based on money. And so I try to tell people, get out of thinking that every brain-ten police car needs to look the same, we're doing what's best for the city, you know, from a financial standpoint.
One last question, and I promise I'll be doing it. I saw a proposal for Fire Station Number Two in 2022, but I didn't see a budget capital item.
I don't believe we put a budget item in the budget for the purchase of the land. We're in the process right now of looking what, what's out there and evaluating the needs of the department, and that is something that obviously would be, I would call, an extraordinary expenditure, not reoccurring, and we would come to council, obviously, and look at funding sources for that.
Capital. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coachman?
Thank you. I think all of my questions have been answered, but I would like to make a comment. Thank you to all of you, putting together such a professional and detailed, as it should be when you're talking about numbers, visual for us to see and digest, and I will still be digesting a little after the meeting. be digesting a little after the meeting. All I can say is to you, Mr. Perry, you're bringing in new, you know, and some folks have trouble with change, and, and we all probably have trouble with spending a lot of money because it's like, oh, you want to make sure you got the best or the bang for your buck. You bringing in this structure, I feel, will really make the city of Bradenton appear to be the friendly city throughout the city. You're gonna have people in place that can get things done much faster than we can now because we have people trying to do 10 jobs as opposed to just their one. So my comment is, thank you. Thank you all for looking at a way to serve all of the citizens of Bradenton equitably.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Just a couple of comments, obviously echo with all the staff. Great job, and we appreciate that part of it. And I know, even if you walk in here on a Saturday morning and scare somebody, doing extra work is much appreciated. So, try not to scare them when you walk down the hallway, but thank you for, for being here and doing that, because again, we've got a great staff, and it, obviously, I think a lot of us up here wouldn't be for maybe saying we're gonna add this much at this time, but what we're adding is quality, gonna be able to make everybody's life better as well as then setting us up for the future. And I think that's very important. You know, we did, the state, through great leadership, has kept the money coming in, and that's what we, we're happy to say. Plus, the city and county has done a great job at setting up places that people want to be, and I think that's important. So, you know, it does take a little bit extra sometimes to get it to that point and to have the redundancy, and I think that's done a great job. On my, my main question, though, is, and it's been talked about a long time, is you have an org chart in there. Are you proposing that we approve that org chart?
I would leave it up to council. I would request that to get, you know, tacit approval to move forward. Obviously, under the charter, any individuals that were selected would have to come before council as department directors for individual approval of that. But yes, I would.
And I think that's what this council had said originally, let's wait till the new administrator, and I think, you know, it might have been, maybe wanted sooner, but it took you the eight weeks to kind of see what we need and how we need to do it. And obviously, like you said, the, any department director that you're adding would still have to come before with your recommendation at that point.
Yes, sir.
So, is that something we want to do now, or we want to have on a next, a next meeting? I'm just saying. So, so I know it's not on the, on the agenda.
Can we do it at the next meeting?
Yeah, that's what I was bringing up, so we can know that we will have that as an agenda item the next meeting.
Very good.
Do it, so.
Appreciate everybody's attention. I know it was a little bit lengthy and detailed, but, but I hope it was helpful.
All right. Is there any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Okay. Council reports, we will start in Ward Two.
Ah. Well, I just have one thing. Mr. Perry, don't you go away. Mr. Perry and I had a wager over the, the Florida State Notre Dame game. I have to say, I was very proud of the Florida State football team and how they clogged their way back from an 18-point deficit. I also think that Notre Dame played a heck of a game. I think that the pundits thought that they were coming to Florida State and that they were gonna blow Florida State off the field, and that did not happen. So, our wager was that I would wear a Notre Dame item if Notre Dame won, and he would wear a Florida State item if Florida State won. So, Mr. Perry, I don't, how do you men do this?
This way, I'll take mine off, and we can do it. Exchange? Put these back with their rightful owners? I don't think I'll be wearing this again.
Mr. Well, and Mr. Perry, I ordered this off of the Notre Dame website, so wear it in good health.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, an observation about having gone through the whole budget thing here, that, you know, conversation was, was asked about the restructuring of our organization. What we're, in my opinion, what we're doing is we're restructuring, we're restructuring the government that was really an inheritance from the Bill Evers small-town business model that we've been operating under, and we're now, we're now going into a modern, mid-sized city, which is something, a conversation I've had with Mr. Perry, how do we get there? How do we go from this small town to where we should be, you know, and where we're going? I mean, we've been discovered by the earth. And then also, the, the, the main thing that's happened is that we have a real, it's an administration department. It's not a department, though. It's the, it's the, it's the middle between the legislative and the department heads. And our last administrator was the city clerk and treasurer-turned-administrator. So at this point in time, we're really going into a whole new level of governance that we've never done before. So, I'm completely supportive of everything that's been done, where we're heading. I'm excited. I think it's the right place at the right time, and I just feel really good about everything. And secondly, and lastly, I'm getting tired of being told to not, to lean into my microphone. My chair is broken. I want it fixed. It goes back into the recliner position.
Do the level on the side?
It doesn't do that.
Your left side?
Yeah. Anyway. That's it.
That's it. Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, I agree with, I'm glad you mentioned it. I think we were past due on upgrading some equipment here. I was always accused for the first two years of not being, speaking in the microphone and that's because I didn't want anybody to hear what I had to say, but now I do. So, we need to have some upgrade in, I know Tamara can't control the monitors up here, and the public doesn't get to see everything that we see, and I get complaints that, well, how come it's not there? Well, we have to manually put it on that computer hard drive prior to the meeting, and get up there and operate it. We should be a little more tech savvy in this day and age, so I would recommend that we look into that and
Yes, sir.
Increase, increase, that's, that's just my proposal. The garage, I didn't, you know, wasn't able to, now I can talk about it. The parking garage at the Judicial Center, we're still have responsibility for that. I thought that was reverted back to the
This is the garage that's farther down Main Street, not the county garage.
Oh, the, oh, the one farther down?
That's called the Judicial Garage, yes.
Okay. And, thank you. Riverwalk Project, do we have a flow chart on when that's gonna go? I go over there every day, and there's a lot of equipment there, but there's not a lot of activity some days. Like Friday, nobody was there. This morning, one or two people, subcontractors was there, but nothing was happening in the park. I just don't see that there's movement, you know.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sanders, myself, Mayor, and Mr. McClellan went out there, I think it was last Monday, and, and we had the project manager meet us out there, and I think I'll defer to Mr. McClellan to give us an update on, on how progress is going there. They were working on it very extensively when we were there, and I think
About three days, they did great.
Very well, maybe. Yep. And I don't know if that's
It's like went back to the same as before. So, you know, and I go by there every day, sometimes two or three times a day.
So do I. Right now, they're, they're finalizing or finishing up the storm drainage piping work and prepping for curbing. So, you would have seen yesterday, they tore out curbing along Second Avenue in preparation for what's gonna be coming as part of the curbing that's supposed to be starting today. And they're also, they stripped the forms off of the concrete for the knee walls that are, it's at the circle at the back southwest corner that is going to connect into the Reflections property. So that's, that work has been done. So, I think a lot of the prep work associated with the piping and all of that, before they do any of the final prettying up of the property, has been pretty much established now. So, I've, in follow-up to our last council meeting, I mentioned it to both Kim Lee Horn, the designers, and to NDC, the construction folks, that at a future workshop, we're gonna want to have a detailed presentation of talking about where we're at, where we're going. So that's in the works.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The lighting over there in that same area, Robin, I don't know where we're at on this. This was a problem before the certificate of occupancy. We promised them that this was taken care of, it's not taken care of. Where do we stand today on this? Because I live in that area, and it doesn't take a specialist to figure out if that light there is too bright. You can do that by the human eye, and I haven't told you, it's too bright.
Right.
Trust me.
Yeah.
And then we, so then we hire a professional, I don't know what that costs, probably a couple of grand, to go over there and tell us what we already knew, and now we're not doing anything, and they're still complaining. So, fill us, fill us in on
Let me jump in real quick, and I, that lighting, they ended up doing that for us for zero, to give us the presentation, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. McClellan. Last night, Robin had agreed to go out there at 10:30 and meet the residents. I had asked the chief and our CRA officer, KP, to meet us, so the chief and I and that met with Robin, met with five residents at 10:30 last night. I think they, they got, and the gentleman that came here and criticized us was a little bit more humbled at the time last night, and some of the things that, and Robin can give the ultimate, but I just felt like, I didn't want Robin being there by herself in that situation, and I had gone out there once a couple months ago. So, I thought it was very important, but I think there, some resolution came a little last night, some of the things we're gonna work on, that, some things that, the pool area is crazy, but the one resident that lives directly across from the pool was thanking those lights being on. So I think you're gonna have a little bit of a neighborhood, you know, one person likes the lights, and, but if I was sleeping in a house and I couldn't go to sleep because the lights were shining through my blinds, I'd feel the same way, too.
Right.
So that was my thought out of last night, but also follow-up with what the lighting plan and other things that can be done.
Right. And, and to pursue this as code enforcement action, which it would be at this point, we do have to have that data to present to the special magistrate if it gets that far. So for the time being, we've shared that data with NDC. I'm gonna be, after last night's meeting, gonna be reaching out to them and pinpoint exactly the lights that we were talking about with the neighbors. There were some improvements I saw since the last time I was out there, which was before it was CO. They have put shields on some of the lights, they have tipped some of the lights down. One of the lights was out, and I don't know if that's a permanent condition or if that was just temporarily out, but we also talked to the residents about some of the things we can do on the city, on the street lights, because those are also part of the issue and the brightness on the streets. So, we want to keep the street safe, but at the same time, we need to be code compliant. I think the main factor, there was a couple of lights on site, and mainly the pool lights in that area were exceeding code. So I, I can enforce on what is exceeding code, but also trying to get them to work with the neighborhood to just put shields on where we can, even if it doesn't exceed code. So that's, that's our goal at this point.
Well, the problem they had is they were already promised that that was being done. Now it's moved into a code issue, which should have been fixed before that. We, we've pushed it into, we've created, what are they gonna do? They're gonna, they're gonna change the illumination of the bulb?
They're gonna have to do what it takes to comply with code with respect to the pool lighting. The pool lighting is the main light that is non-compliant with code. I think some of the other issues, they're, they may be compliant with code, but we're gonna try to press for other solutions that are gonna actually make the neighbors happy without necessarily becoming a code issue.
Well, I, I sat there and looked at it, and the new, the new section that's built is much brighter than the first section it was built. If the first section was, if the second section or reserve was the same, nobody would be complaining. Why haven't we required that and said, look, that lighting was sufficient for Phase One? Phase Two, we had to put, you know, this in there, and now we've just dragged this out for, this has been going on for a year.
Okay. Well, all I can say is that we've, we did inspections with the equipment that we had and the expertise that we had available to us. I think in the future, we're gonna be looking at making sure that there is an expert brought in prior to CO. But for the time being, we just, we're gonna do our best to resolve this issue. It's all we can do at this point.
Well, my comment is, I don't think we should have gave a certificate of occupancy until we did it, and if we don't have equipment to do that, why are we even attempting it? But that's either here or there, but today, the problem is not resolved.
Okay.
But Mr. Sanders, also, one of the things, we talked with the residents last night, was the Florida Power and Light pole, the lights that are on the street, have been changed out to the LED also, which makes it even brighter for the street part of it.
Talking about those lights. I'm talking about
No, but that's what, that was from the side when the, you know, compliant-wise, on the curb side of the property, we're compliant. When you get across the street, which is farther away, wasn't compliant, but that could be because of the Florida Power and Light, and obviously, that's a safety issue, and but they were very understanding. They also now ask if we could move the no-parking signs from the one side to the other side of the street, which, and that's when I mentioned to Jacob, that, you know, we did that at their request to put it on the north side of the street. Now they want them on the south side, but to have the north side with parking. So there's a lot of, a lot of things to work through, but it was a very good constructive meeting last night, I thought, with the chief and Robin, and as well as the residents.
Well, I like proactive versus retroactive, you know, because it's always works better in my life. If you do something right the first time, you don't have to go back out and explain why you did it wrong the first time. So, that's where I'm at.
Some of the lights that are there, you know, if there's, there's, those are taller buildings in the front buildings, so the different lights to light up that parking lot. Again, I don't know all the exact, if we're 100 feet away from the curb with a 30-foot pole, if we were less than 100, it's 25. So nobody's, I think, gone out with a tape measure, so if that's wrong, it should be fixed, obviously. If it's within compliance, then we can't, we're meeting the codes and, and, but again, if I was sleeping there and the lights were coming through my windows and I couldn't sleep at night, I'd be asking if they could help us out, too. And I think that's where we're, we're going. That's the goal of it, is to get, hey, you're in compliance, but can you put a little shield here that may still put the light out, but still, you know, keep the safety? And obviously, the chief, when I said about the Florida Power and Lights, maybe there's an option there, because if we're getting the light, maybe we don't need those, and that would save us some money from having to pay for those lights, you know, that we pay for. And the chief said, no, that's a safety issue. We want light, especially when that park opens. You know, when the park opens, that may change some of that dynamics, too. So I agree with you, and I think that Jacob saw that we were trying at this point, now how do we make it better now that we have a planning director? And we didn't have one then. So, you know, I think it's a combination of things, and if we have the administrative staff in order, maybe some of those things won't fall through the loop. So, sorry, Mrs. Coachman?
Oh, no. Were you?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Mr. Sanders
This is not, we're not talking about the street, let's move on. They're not talking about the street lighting. We're talking about private entity light that's overflowing into the neighborhood, and so, end of conversation. The deal today is it's not fixed. A comment was made, and I'm not gonna beat you up over it, but I am gonna make, I just want it corrected for the record. Chief, you said that your budget was 14% of the overall budget, but that includes $20 million, which is, makes it up to $140, $40 million, $10 million of capital reserve moved over, and $10 million of ARPA. Actually, your budget is about 80% to 90% of the ad lorm tax in the city. So, just for correction of the record.
Okay. I just commented on what we're asking for this year and referenced the ask, why is 14%?
14% of $140 million, you're right, but there's $20 million that wasn't in there last year, probably won't be in there the near after. So, these percentages, sometimes perception is not fact, that, our normal operating budget last year was, was $120 million, or our total budget. And, but again, ad lorm taxes is 23, 24 million, and your budget is 20 million, which is about 80% of what property, our property owners always come up to me and say, I pay my taxes. I deserve services. Yes, you do. But your, your taxes on your house do not barely pay just a little bit more for our public safety. So understand, we have to have these other revenues coming in to make this thing work up here. So, I, and they say, I didn't know that. I said, well, you know it now. If you wanted me to send you a copy of the budget, I'd be glad to do that to you." So, I don't like that, you know, that, you know, that, now, somebody will pick up on that and say, "Well, you lied to me, you said forty-fourteen percent of the budget." No. That's, that's not true. If you want, I'll sit down with you and show you the numbers, so. And that's why I'm a numbers guy, 'cause I, you know, sorry. And again, it's not, not to beat you up, it's that same way in the county, it's the same way in other cities, public safety is an expensive item. Nah, I'm done, thank you.
Ms. Coachman?
Thank you. With all this talking about lighting, Mr. McClellan, we'll get together and talk about the situation we had talked about before about lighting. I'm just, looking at the time, I'm just happy that we're moving in the right direction. Maybe a few bumps, but we will get over them and speed right away. War five is alive.
Thank you, Mrs. Coker.
Yeah, I just wanna say a big thank you to all the department heads, and especially to our new administrator, Mr. Perry. It's obvious that you've put a lot of time and effort into the budgets and the presentations today, and it helps me, more than you know, especially being new to council, so I appreciate all your time and effort, and it's very appreciated. I also, I know we, time is short, but I just wanna pull these things up, I know we got a lot on our plate, but the retail in the garage, getting something moving on that, and also the micro-mobility, I, for some reason, thought something was on today's, is that coming up soon, and...
It's coming up on the next meeting.
And one of the things, will, will the contractor be here, or, I was just in Charlotte, where they have them, and I just, a couple of things that I saw I wanted to get addressed, if we're gonna be able to make an informed decision.
The committee is...
You know, I'm expecting the lieutenant that's gonna be coming into the CRA meeting, he's chairing that, so he'll be able to answer that question as soon as he wants to.
Okay, great.
When you talk about contractor, if you're talking about the firm that would be putting the scooters out?
I just wanna know how they would address an issue, an issue that I saw, and I don't know who would answer that, and maybe, probably the committee people, if they've been looking into it. But when you see them, how do they keep people from just leaving them anywhere? If they don't, then that's, then that's my question, if you can't do that.
The approaches would be in how you set up the program. In other words, how, if somebody rides a scooter and just dumps it someplace, without swiping a card to stop the charge, that individual is still gonna be paying for the rental of that scooter for a continuous period of time. So, you're not gonna prevent them from doing it, you're gonna prevent them from doing it again.
So, I mean, I just saw them just, it seemed like there wasn't like, kinda like how you have bicycles on a bike rack? They didn't, they were just kinda stopped, you know, if somebody was trying to bring a, you know, wheelchair or a stroller down the sidewalk, you wouldn't be able to pass them.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of what, what the committee has been looking at, in working with the consultant, not the contractor, in terms of saying, there's some legwork that the city would do up front. For instance, as part of the Riverwalk on Second Avenue, we've designated a spot that could be a corral for those.
Okay.
Okay, so it's setting up those corrals at locations and saying, you as a contractor, work with those corral locations, if you want others, you do them as well, but do some legwork up front from our side to minimize that potential.
That's pretty much where I was coming at, if we're gonna talk about it.
Right, and that's, that's what we had brought up from day one, when this came up a couple of years ago, that we don't wanna be the Atlanta, the, where there's four different...
Charlotte.
Charlotte, Pittsburgh, different places, that you just drop it, and as soon as you get off it, basically, it goes off your credit card and it's there. Now, they like that being all over the city, so anybody could pick it up at any time. For our city, is what, what I've proposed the whole time, is, and I thought maybe we needed two or three bike barns, or scooter barns. But if you think about our city, and this has got something that, even being in Pittsburgh, looking at some of the things, we need one at LECOM, we need one at Village of the Art, we need it at our parking garages, we need it here. So, people may have to walk a little bit to get to the restaurant, but they're not tripping over those scooters, 'cause when they get off it, they wanna put it back in this barn, goes off their credit card, so they're not being charged it, and then when they wanna get back, they go back to that area. But you strategically have to have six or eight locations, because think about how nice it would be to park in our parking garage, go to Village of the Arts, go to the spring training game, come back, stop and eat dinner in Village of the Arts, then come downtown and have an ice cream, get in your car and leave the parking garage. That is the true mobility that our harder-walkable city needs to have, I feel.
I agree.
But again, clean, not just laying on the road, not in the river, but as soon as they, somebody throws, they get it out of there, they throw it in the river, they basically own it, you know, but like Jim said, they may do it once, but they're not gonna do it a second time.
The other aspect of that is some of the, for lack of a better term, the infrastructure associated. You don't just say, "That square that we paint lines on the ground," and say, "That's where you put them." The recommendations coming from the consultant are that we do something more akin to a bike rack, not so much, not so much a bike rack, but a, for lack of a better term, railing around the area to designate it, because otherwise, somebody can come in and just drop one and they all fall over.
Right. And one thing you need to consider is that we have to offer this to the public, it already has their own and their bicycles, which was, is a, is probably gonna be a nightmare for the police department, because, to monitor that, 'cause I can take my, my moped up there, and it's not controlled by a credit card, so I put it anywhere, then you're gonna have to hire a mobility cop to police that, so, I don't know if she's worked that into the budget or not, but there's, it's, it's gonna be a full-time job for maybe one or two people to monitor that.
Well, it's, part of that comes into whatever contract you establish with the vendor as well, because...
This is my unit.
No, no, I understand that, that, your unit, and we're not gonna control that. You, you're not gonna, do I can, we have bikes that can go anywhere, and people leave bikes anywhere. I mean, if, if we wanna, and everything associated...
If I got a thousand dollars in a bike, I'm not just leaving it anywhere, I'm locking it on a bike rack, and that's the good part.
Understood. But there's, you know, the, the program that we're setting up is not intended to restrict use by somebody who owns one of their own.
But that's been the problem in other cities, as I've verified, that it wasn't the rental, it was the other people that was abusing it, just leaving them everywhere, and we didn't, and that city didn't have any control of it, because they didn't have, you know, code enforcement or a police department that wants to go around and check the tags on a bicycle.
But again, it goes into the ordinance as to how you restrict it.
Yeah, we haven't seen it.
You gotta police it, though.
One of the main problems with the other cities that you've seen is they have several vendors. That's, that's what I found out in Tampa, years, at the very beginning, is when you have too many people, it's a wild, wild west, and by having one vendor and saying, "This is the rule, and if you violate it, we give your contract to the next guy." That's, that's how we get regulations.
And that's the approach that we're taking, is, is the recommendation is gonna be one vendor.
Right.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Ms.?
All right.
Anything else? No, it's a good thing, we gotta get it.
Yeah, just two things I'd like to see us keep pushing.
Push it off, nope, perfect. All right, anything else? Nope, okay, thank you. Just a couple of things, first off, I know Jim, and I saw a couple of them out, and obviously, on Saturday, we had our guys really do kind of a task force with yard waste, trying to get caught up in some of the things, so, you know, just tell all of them, thank you for working that extra. I know that's been, we've all been getting those emails, that about yard waste, and which week, and what week, and, so, thank you for keeping, working on that. Already talked about the lighting, again, Robin, thank you for going out there last night, so that was, that was great. The nine-eleven, obviously, we wanna to celebrate that, obviously, it's not something you wanna celebrate, but we gotta celebrate the heroes that, that lost their lives, as well as all the military people over the twenty years that have been out there, and this, starting tomorrow, and over the next couple of days, it's gonna be a great tribute to, to our country, so we appreciate all the public safety people that are involved in it. I know that my cousin was in the One Tower as a New York Police Department officer, and he got out, but my aunt didn't know for all day if he got out or not, you know, but they were running to it, and that's the hard part, that, you know, you were running in when we were running out. So, thank you very much for all that, to all of the public safety. And, and on that note, the number-one job of any government is public safety. It's our police and fire. It's not just the, the police or fire, it's both. And if it takes more to manage that, then we've gotta do it, and we've gotta figure it out, because without the police and without the fire, where would our city be? You know, but, so we appreciate that. And then, something came up a little earlier about, obviously, the org chart, and it's something that we've talked about numerous times, but of this building and a space study, that's something that I'm gonna ask Mr. Perry to bring up at our next meeting, to codify that, that if we're adding all these positions, what, we need to do a space study to see what we need, as well as probably get an updated appraisal and a survey on this property to see what our next steps are. I mean, we've talked about it for eight years that I've been here, eight and a half years, and I know it was talked about before that. So, I just think that whatever the council's pleasure is as we go forward, we need to make some of those decisions, and at least get them off the plate with this new administrator. You know, we're tasking him to do a lot, and I hope that we, you know, up or down, we start working that process. Obviously, if we're gonna be adding, we've gotta figure out where we're at, so, I'm gonna push that on, for the next agenda, and just be safe and enjoy the post-holiday week. So, I'm just gonna ask, in general, does any department head have anything else? So, we know the chief would get up, so, but...
She always brings us good news, some good news.
I just wanted to, I do have very good news. Two things, I'm not gonna reiterate the watch-me-in report that I sent you all last night, but on the heels of what the mayor said, I want you to read those very carefully. Those were two occurrences last night, in the midnight hours, one of them was when you and I were not too far, where my officers ran across folks who were convicted felons, they had meth, they had drugs, one had just fired a gun. My officers were right there, on scene, to take those guns away from those folks. Very, very dangerous, precarious situations, and I complimented them okay on what was clearly great de-escalation, great communication skills, but just a reminder of the danger that they put themselves in, day in, day out, so please look at that. The good news, and so I just got this memo, I signed it while I was sitting here, for the first time in about four years, we did a total evidence and property inventory, total. It's something that we usually bump up a year before we even are required to do that for accreditation. I have to pull officers off the street, I have to pull people away from their jobs, because it takes about five to six weeks, because we have to put our hands on thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy pieces of evidence. I am happy to report that, in fact, we put our hands on thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy pieces of evidence. Not one thing was misplaced, not one thing was not where it should be. Great news for us, great news for the city. I had confidence, but it's always a little bit of a nail-biter, but, you know, hats off to my folks who, who are making sure that that process is running as well as it is right now, so I wanted to give you that great news, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Perry?
No, sir.
Mr. Rudisell? Anybody? Okay. All right, seeing nothing for further ado, we'll be adjourned.